Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-17. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chair person at this time. There was our recording. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Subsection 20G, no person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Clerk Scott, can I get a roll call of members, please?
Counselor Golub?
Here.
Vice President Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Lapinski?
Present.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forghee? Counselor Ricketts is not current, present, thank you.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Toronto?
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and this is voluntary. Do I have a motion to approve the August 17th, August 31st, and September 21st minutes?
So moved.
So moved, Ricketts.
Okay.
All right, and I got a second. Is there just to let me know on the agenda that there is no word minutes? Okay, so on the agenda, the word minutes is not there, so I would ask for a friendly amendment to just update that little typo. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Next, we have communications from Superintendent of Schools and the School Committee.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all. I'm not sure where I'm supposed to look for them. Nice to see you all at home. The superintendent had another engagement tonight, so I believe it's the first time we've brought who I affectionately call ASKP, Assistant Superintendent Karen Patonode, is here with me tonight. And I'm just going to talk about a couple of things and then hand it over to her, and then, of course, we'll take your questions after that. The pandemic has made me start to prepare notes where I never did before, so I had to write stuff down so I'd remember. I want to talk specifically about the teachers and our educators in the district, and they are currently at the negotiating table. Their contract was for one year and ended at the end of June of this year. I've already talked directly with the mayor about their contract, our negotiations, and specifically the contract stabilization account. The mayor's also spoken with the superintendent. I've also talked directly with members of the council already about this, and I mentioned both those things because I think it's important. This is a group effort. These folks are, they're a big part of our community, not just our school community, and we need to work together to make sure we do the right thing. We already know there's support for our teachers throughout the community and for doing the right thing by them. And when I'm talking about our educators, so folks understand on the council, if you don't already know this, we have Unit A, which is our classroom teachers, and we have Unit C, which is the instructional assistants and other educators in the district. And they negotiate at the same time, but their contracts are separate. I've spoken with a few counselors who really want us to provide numbers, data on various things, and I totally get that. And we will absolutely, as we're able, provide data. I know we feel really strongly as a school committee that when we're in negotiations, that that's part of good faith negotiations, is to keep all of that at the table. But I, we do have, it's important to also have, you know, the right general information to talk with. So Andy Picat, our business manager, has put together some, is there feedback? I thought it was just me. Thank you. Sorry about that, everyone. Thank you, Counselor Gwynn. So Andy Picat and the superintendent worked together to put together what I am very gracious for, and I also do this in my job, which I work in financial aid, which does not mean I do a lot of math, and I don't want to do a lot of math at City Council. I don't think that's helpful to any of us. But they put together some simple math that I think will give some helpful perspective on numbers related to doing the right thing by our teachers, our educators, and their wages. And because we're going to talk numbers, I will certainly forward this information to Clerk Scott, so folks can have it afterwards to make sure we're talking about the same numbers. So just for simple math, a 1% increase in wages for fiscal year '22, just for Unit A, that's the classroom teachers, would be $142,483. 1% then in fiscal year '23, $150,199. No one is talking about giving our educators only a 1% raise. That is just simple math that I want folks to understand, so we can talk about what we actually need to do to do right. These are city employees. Their contracts should be comparable to other city unions and what they're getting. And so I guess, I'm outside of my lane at this point for a brief second, that I would, I guess formally request that the council would consider to have $700,000 to $800,000 in contract stabilization to cover contractual increases in wages for our educators. We have to, we have to pay a competitive wage. People come to me all the time and they say, is it true our educators can leave and make $15,000 to $20,000 doing the same job in another regional district near us? I think, I know anecdotally of a handful that that is true for, but people do leave for all types of reasons, so we don't want to say that's why our educators leave. And we just need to do the right thing and make sure that we are focused on doing what's best for our school communities in every way, and this is one of the big ways that we can do that. And I guess that would be the end of my comments, and of course, I want ASKP to speak first, and then I would happily take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for having me. It's nice to be here. Christine wanted me to share with you some school updates and some happenings that have been occurring. Our elementary schools last week all enjoyed an ice cream social for our families and students. They were very well attended, and we look forward to hosting many more family engagement events at the elementary level. We have bingo for books coming and some math nights, so we're excited about that, so keep an eye out for those dates and times. Today, the whole district celebrated Unity Day. Unity Day is a day to promote inclusivity and to bring awareness to anti-bullying, and through that, the whole district was encouraged, students, staff, myself included, to wear orange in support of Unity Day. I had the pleasure of spending part of my day at Newton, and it was very well represented at that building, for sure. The middle school and the elementary schools next week will host parent-teacher conferences on Thursday, October 27th, and Friday, the 28th. So if you are a parent and want to engage in that, please contact your school where your child goes and set up an appointment, and we look forward to engaging with our families and discussing your individual children. And finally, we are gearing up for November 8th, which is our District-Wide Professional Development Day, and finalizing our plans for all of our staff to engage in professional high-quality development on that day. We do want to remind folks, though, that schools are closed that day because it is also voting day. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for School Committee or for Assistant Superintendent? Oh, Counselor Healy has his hand raised.
Sure. Thank you. I have two questions, but we'll start with the first one. In regards to the contract stabilization, and I think we all agree that teachers deserve a better wage rate in Greenfield, right? But my question is kind of linked to the ESER funds, so today, I guess, the question is how much money do we have left in ESER funds, and can that also be used towards contract stabilization?
So contract stabilization is a city-side account. I don't know if the city gets ESER funds, but if you're asking about the schools spending their ESER funds, we have provided detailed budget information about how those funds are being spent, and it's not, it's not, I can have the superintendent clarify, but I don't think it's being spent on wages. We have needs everywhere, and that's not really, it doesn't get us where we need to be to use ESER funds for wages. It's, in my opinion, we're using those in the most effective way, which is addressing learning loss. And I can have the superintendent certainly highlight more specifics about how they've planned that out over the three or four years of the grant, but that's not, and, you know, the precedent and the past practice has been for the contract stabilization funding for the first year of the contracts for city employees to come from the contract stabilization account.
Okay. Thanks for answering that. I'll do some more research on my end as well, and I'll look forward to seeing the superintendent's data on the ESER funds, but the second question-
Before you move on, I'll say that I believe ESER funds are one-time, that's one-time funding, and we're not supposed to use one-time funding for something like wages, because when that runs out, the wages are still there. I think Director Gilman has been drilling that into my head for as long as I've been here, so.
The second question is, you call it the October report, but I guess I'm wondering if you've received the enrollment report for Greenfield and, you know, what we've seen in downturn in enrollment in Greenfield, and, you know, if we're addressing the issues behind, you know, the lower enrollment in Greenfield.
I would definitely refer that back to the superintendent to respond unless, yeah, that's definitely a question for Dr. DeBarge, and we will happily have her address that to President Gilmore to get to the whole council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next I have Counselor Bullock, and then I'm going to turn it back to the folks in the room.
Yeah, thank you for the update. I just have a question, and maybe I missed it when you were going through the numbers. Does the, do those numbers include, and does the negotiation currently happening include instructional assistance as well, or is it just, or is it all classroom teachers or IAs included in that, or is that separate?
I'm happy to clarify. The numbers I brought are only a 1% for Unit A. We did not prepare or bring numbers for Unit C. That is the instructional assistance. Like I said, we're at the negotiating table, so I think it's really important that as much as possible be done in good faith there.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Thank you.
Okay, I saw Counselor Disorger. Were there other hands that were up, just so I can put down my speaking order here? Okay, and then Counselor Bottomley, and then Counselor Toronto.
I just wanted to say thank you for advocating for significant funding in contractual stabilization. I think each of us here goes to the grocery store and the gas station, and the cost of living has gone up astronomically, so I think you went out on a limb there, and thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bottomley was next.
I also wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward tonight, because as a counselor, I want to know what the school committee thinks, because we obviously hear from the mayor's side, that's, it's really important for us to hear from the school committee and know what the committee wants and thinks about education in our city, because when I started the council three years ago, we were left with a really tricky budget situation, and I think that's-
We had fallout from that in the school side as well, from contract stabilization specifically, and a missed administrative piece. I think there was a lack of quorum at a budget meeting at one point that caused a problem with contract stabilization. I believe that was 2020 for fiscal year '21, but I could be off by a year. Yeah, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah, no, so the point is that it's really important that we have that communication, because we don't want to be stuck at the end when we're told we can only review the final number, when it's such an important decision, and we really need to advocate for our teachers. It's really important and know those statistics. So I know it's a little uncomfortable that we're in the middle of negotiations, but it's, it's really important for us to hear from you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Toronto, then Counselor Mayo.
Yeah, I also, you know, hearing, hearing what the need is and then seeing what, I guess, the supply is looking like, those two avenues aren't going to meet well on paper at this point. So I would definitely encourage whatever way, I mean, we can, we can add, I think everybody knows that, we can add too. So I would definitely be encouraging to, finding a way through subsequent financial orders other than what we're, we've got on the table tonight, to get the stabilization fund more up to what you're requesting or what you're expecting in a, in a good faith negotiation.
Thank you.
Say, Counselor Mayo, and then Counselor Healy, do you have your hand back up again, or did you forget to lower it?
I lowered it, but it's staying up, so I don't know what's going on.
Okay, I'm just checking. Counselor Mayo is next.
Okay. Hello, everyone. As having been a union president before, not for teachers, I do understand how important it is to bargain in good faith and keep it at the table as much as possible. I'm interested in hearing more about on the city side as to what we can do to shore up the stabilization fund, to make sure that we can give a adequate, more than adequate raise for our teachers. They certainly deserve it. I wouldn't want to do the job in a million years, and I've worked with all different populations, but I wouldn't want to work with students. As much as I love kids, I wouldn't want to teach them. So my hats off to you for doing just that, and you deserve a fair contract, and I hope you get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayo.
All right, next I have Counselor Golub.
Yeah, I want to echo the thanks for taking a stand for making these positions competitive. I think that's really important, and, and also for advocating for equity and across the union contracts in our city. I'm, I'm all for the firefighters getting the 8% to 11% raise that they've recently gotten, and I think the teachers deserve similar, similar support. And you said, like you said, there's many reasons why people leave, but low wages is one of them. And so I have two questions that I'm not sure if you're able to answer, but I want to ask them and see. You specifically mentioned 700,000 to 800,000 in contract stabilization, and I'm wondering what percentage raise that would lead to if that was allocated. Do you know that? Or why?
I think anyone could, could figure that out pretty quickly. It should be at the bargaining table, is how I'm going to put it.
Okay, sure. And my second question is, have you asked them, had discussions with the mayor about bringing forth an order to City Council for that amount of contract stabilization?
Sorry, I'm very sorry. Not that specific discussion. However, you know, what I will say is, communication around financials between the city and the schools is always a work in progress, and I have found the mayor to be willing to discuss directly and listen, and we are doing our best to keep working through things in that channel, and I wish that we had a stronger foundation for how we operate financially with the city. We don't have that right now, but we're working on it, and it's better than it was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who had questions for schools? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, next I have communications from the mayor and city officers and employees. So you say.
Good evening. Whoa. Good evening, councilors. It's nice to be back, to see all of you here, and hello, you folks and councilors who are online. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues on the school committee. Just so you councilors know, I am a school committee member, and I'm at every meeting that I can make unless I'm not in town. So I am a school committee member. I have the full benefits of a school committee member, and I do get to sit in on all executive sessions and so forth and so on, and vote. So her comments, Chair Poetti's comments, who I consider to be a colleague, are very prescient and well-received by the mayor. So this evening, I want to start with, last night you received a full list of all the grants that have come in, I think the latter part of FY '22, FY '21 into FY '22, and it was significant. And they do just keep coming, because, one, we did hire a grant writer, and she's been making sure that all the departments are covered when, when she can, I mean, when they need her, let me put it that way. But we continue to receive grants, so I'll start tonight with a couple of updates. The fire department recently received a $70,000 grant that will replace equipment that is approximately 30 years old. It is for air packs. Those will follow them to the new fire station. The current system can only refill two air packs at a time rather than three, which will be in the new one. The new filling station will also have enhanced filtration and the ability to wireless track the filling of bottles in accordance with the Fire Protection Association. So we were grateful to get that grant, as we are all of them. And a recent grant that we received is also on the energy side. A hundred and, funny number, don't know how they come up with it, a $103,002 Green Communities grant will allow the city to continue its efforts toward reducing reliance on fossil fuels. The grant awarded to the city by the State Department of Energy Resources through the Green Communities Program allows the city to buy its first two fully-electric vehicles, replacing two aging gas-powered vehicles used by the Building Inspections Department and the Health Department. And I, as I recall, you approved both of those vehicles last year in your capital budget, so thank you for that, and thank you to the Green Communities Program. And an electric vehicle charging station, which will be installed at the city offices at 20 Sanderson Street, where those two vehicles will rely. Additionally, and this is also extremely important, that specific grant will also cover the cost of upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant heating system. So this will be an ongoing report, even though, as we discussed last evening in Ways and Means, you will get a quarterly report with the status of all the grants that we receive in the city. And I, I do want to make the point, as I made it last night, these grants are really important. They are generally from the state of Massachusetts or from the federal government. Occasionally, there will be an outlier, similar, the Fisk Avenue Park was oddly enough from the AARP, you know, those people that send you that letter when you're 50 years old. Well, they have a broad array of things that they service, but those are your tax dollars coming back to you, and in ways that really assist the city and the taxpayer, because otherwise, the city couldn't run with a lot of the different things that we get grants for. A city this size simply can't afford all of those important things that we need, many of them on the capital side. Next, I want to address the items on your agenda tonight that consider a fire station And you have two very important, critical, and timely votes to take tonight that I know are of great interest, and I'm, I'm sorry, folks over here. So I am speaking to you as well. You have, I know these grants are, this, these votes, rather, I'm sorry, are of great interest to our Greenfield residents and the men and women of the Greenfield Fire Department. They are, one, to rescind the borrowing of the $500,000 for the construction of the new library, and, two, to appropriate $500,000 from borrowing for the construction of a new fire station. This money is greatly needed for this important project. It's needed now, not nine months from now, in order for it to be built on time, so that the project budget does not need to incur any more costs for our temporary quarters, and so that our firefighters do not need to stay in those quarters any longer than they have to. Any delays in purchasing necessary technology, furniture, fixtures, and equipment will be costly, along with the nearly assured regular cost exhalations in materials and labor. These unnecessary costs will hurt the taxpayer, not help them, outweighing any likely benefit they might get from not borrowing. Since 2019, whenever we have- Since 2019, whenever we have come to the city council for money for the new fire station, the city council, you folks, have been very good to the department, that's the fire department, and to the city. It has happened three times. Tonight is the fourth. In 2019, $500,000 was voted for the hiring of the opium designer in the creation of the initial design documents. In May and December of 2020, many of you at this table and perhaps online, not all of you, as many of you weren't, some of you were not here, voted for a total of an additional $15 million. Tonight is an opportunity for you, especially those of you new to the council, to do the right thing again. Finance Director Liz Gillen has provided you with a viable and affordable path on which to provide the essential funding at this time. It's the best strategic plan for funding, primarily because the bond premium generated on the remainder of the fire station authorization, that's $10,050,000, will pay off the $500,000. Meaning, oh, is there feedback? So sorry. I'm happy to do that. I just never, you know, I never know for sure. Meaning, so let me say that off. I will start again. The bond premium generated on the remainder of the fire station authorization, which is $10,050,000, will pay off the $500,000. What that means is no debt service on this $500,000. So I'm asking you this evening to please bring this project home with a positive vote to borrow the $500,000 for construction of the fire station. This is something we need. This is something that people of Greenfield want. And I think that, I think that we can do it. I know we can do it. Next up, and this is my final remarks. I do want to provide you with an update on the Lund property. The LSP Bruce Nicholson, on behalf of the city, 401 Liberty Street LLC, and as part of the PIP process, has completed the steps required by the Mass DEP's notice of audit findings and the PIP. And they did so in a timely manner. He's provided a draft of the conceptual Phase II scope of work to the PIP group, allowing them an extended 50-day review period. They completed their review and their commentary within that 50 days. He then submitted the conceptual Phase II scope of work to the Mass DEP by the agreed-upon deadline, which was October 14th, along with the audit completion statement as required by the notice of audit findings. It's a lot of jargon, but it is important because that is what the Mass DEP is requiring us to do and we are complying. And so are the folks involved in the PIP process. Now, what I need, this is important, I'm going to read it. "We are all now," this is the status of where we're at right now, awaiting Mass DEP review and comment on the conceptual Phase II scope of work submitted by OTO. "The investigations to be performed going forward will be in response to Mass DEP's review comments. And under the proposed scope of work will include further assessment of the groundwater contamination. However, our work scope includes a year of monitoring after new groundwater wells have been installed. So dependent upon test results, we expect it will take at least 1.5 to two years before we can achieve a permanent or temporary solution." And those are the words of OTO. An update I asked for today and received. So that's important information in my book because I didn't have any clue. And it's been a while now since they submitted all their documents. So that is the update as far as the Lund project is concerned today and as far as I know. If I may, I believe President Gilmore, you've allowed chairperson of the Fire Station Building Committee, David Singer, and both Chiefs, Darian, to make additional remarks if they so choose with regard to the two votes that are ahead of you. So may I ask them to come up?
Yes, but while we wait for them to come up, because it's a long trip from the back of the room. Are there any councilors that have any questions for the mayor while she's here? I see Councilor Gollub, then Councilor Torrance, then Councilor Lipinski.
Mayor? It's me, over here, hi. I'd like to bring this back to the schools for a moment.
Sure.
And want to start just by sharing a bit of context, which is my personal story, just a little bit. I moved here when my son was four. He's now 14. And he started at the Academy of Early Learning and at Federal Street School. But in first grade, he was not doing well. And when he started telling me that he hated math, which I knew he loved and still loves, and hated learning and hated school and hated teachers, I realized I needed to do something different. And I had the privilege of scraping things together and figuring things out. And I ended up sending him to the center school. And his behavioral problems changed and he fell back in love with learning. And now he's in ninth grade. And before seventh grade, we were contemplating what to do. We considered even moving to Northampton to have him at Northampton High. But luckily, again, great privilege, we were able to send him to the Center School, to the Four Rivers. He got in through the lottery. And I share that as an example of a parent who, just as an example of engaged parents leaving this district. And the statistics are really clear. Enrollment is decreasing. The average age in the city is increasing. Families are choosing not to move here. And no matter, and no matter how much we invest in the downtown, if we don't invest in our schools, we won't have families moving into this town or staying in this town. And so I want to ask you what the plan is to invest equitably in our schools, especially now that the teachers are negotiating their contract. And I imagine we could talk about how the amounts the schools are allocated is divvied up. But what the schools are allocated in this town is just a piece of the entire pie that the schools get from the pie that is our public funding. And when we look at the percentage that Greenfield is allocating to our public schools, it does not match up to other school districts. According to the statistics from the Department of Revenue, Greenfield is allocating roughly 34% of our entire funds to our public schools. In comparison, Ludlow invests about 52%. North Adams is about 41%. East Hampton is about 36%. Agawam, 49%. Ludlow, 47%. Westboro, 51%. Orange, 54%. 34% is woefully low. And so when we are investing so little of our, the pie that is our public funding in our public schools, I don't know how we can expect teachers to stay here. And I thank all of the teachers who do stay here. And so in order to bring up our test scores, in order to attract families to Greenfield and compel them to stay, and in order to build a thriving city, I believe that we have to not only negotiate with the amount of funds and talk about the SIR funds and all the details of what the teachers have, what the schools have, but we need to increase the entire slice of the pie that the public schools get. And so that brings me to my question. Thank you for listening. But what, my question is, what is your plan to increase the slice of our overall city funding that goes to the schools? Because if it goes from 32 to 34, excuse me, to the average that is 42% roughly for the state, the teachers will get the contract that they're asking for. And so what is your plan to do that?
So the way it works, and I share your, I mean, hearing your story and I share your concern. And typically, as I said, I'm on the school committee. I don't, do not sit on the Budget Finance Committee, nor do I sit on the Negotiations Committee. So I do not have the benefit until I'm updated by the superintendent at a meeting, along with all the other members of the school committee, as to what maybe is being discussed during finance negotiations for the budget for the school committee. And I do not have privy, unless I'm updated in an executive session, to the contract negotiations. So I specifically understanding, but I do on our side. And we negotiated seven contracts between '21 and '22 on the city side. And I was aware of all of those. As I said, I don't sit on those other committees. And what happens is the superintendent creates the superintendent's budget and sends it to the town. We do have an opportunity nominally to weigh in when that budget is presented. So if I were to be able to create a plan, I would need to have a lot, as mayor, I would need to have a lot more information and input into both the contract side and the instructional side that makes up the school committee budget. Both of them do that. And so I'm not saying that the process that we're following now is wrong. I'm just saying that in order for, if you're laying it all on my shoulders, and I don't think it should be, and I'm going to get to your point, or I'm going to hopefully end by explaining what happens on the city side, I would need to have additional conversations. That, as Chair Poirotti was discussing with you earlier, those types of conversations didn't exist when I became mayor. And it has been a work in progress over the year that Dr. DeBarge, you're plus now, a few months, that Dr. DeBarge has been here. So I can't fully answer that particular question, what is the plan? What I do know is that, I don't know where that statistic came from, but the school budget tends to run a good 36% to 38% of our overall budget and is greater than the entirety of the city side budget. So, thank you. In FY23, the city budget, just keep in mind, the schools are large. I mean, they employ a lot of people, as do we, but they employ more. On the city side, in FY23, this 30.6% of the overall school budget was what we're dealing with at the moment. What happens is, at some point, I have to, as mayor, when the mayor's budget is presented to you folks, I have to look at the overall big picture and make really very, whether it's capital or operating, make really very difficult decisions. And I sit at my dining room table most Sunday afternoons when all that's happening and agonize over what those cuts are. And they don't just affect the schools. They cut, they affect the city too. And I think I remember mentioning last year, as we were beginning the discussions in May, when I submitted you the FY23 budget, I had already cut upwards of $700,000 out of the city side of the budget. So we experience cuts too. Please do not think that we don't. But at the end of the day, we have to keep the taxpayer in mind. So there's a certain amount of money that we can allocate and keep the tax rate at a rate that we can all afford so that we can all live here. I look forward to perhaps more thorough conversations in the FY23 budget within the context of how we are operating now. I would encourage you folks to ask those questions at the school committee level that you need answered about the budget and how it's put together, just as you have asked me this evening. So I don't know if that, that's not, I know that's not a satisfactory answer to you, but I think we can maybe perhaps present, hopefully, you know, some version of a plan to go forward. I have sat on the school committee side as well quite some time ago. But the same, same types of questions come up. Where are we going to get the money to do what we need to do to run both the city overall and pay our teachers a living wage? So it's not as if all of this is foreign territory to me.
Okay, next I had Councilor Torrance, then Councilor Lipinski.
Yeah, I was just, I had just two things. One was, you mentioned we got a grant for the electric vehicles for two things that we appropriated money to earlier.
Yeah.
So does that, where does that go back? So if now the grant's there, where did we, I don't remember because that was like six months ago and I didn't know this was happening. But I don't remember where we, do we borrow that money for those vehicles?
I don't either. Without having. Councilor Forchy may have that. I just don't have a computer in front of me and I don't have the five-year plan in front of me.
No, no, no.
He just wants to know if we got a grant to cover those vehicles. Is that money going to go back into, not be borrowed? My guess is, my guess is that we, and I'm just taking a wild guess here. We probably, we may or may not have borrowed for it, yeah.
We authorized a borrowing, which is different than doing the.
Councilor Forchy, could you speak into your mic so that everyone else?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We actually authorized to borrow for that. So whether the borrowing has happened yet or not, I don't know. That's really up to Liz. But I would think that if we got grants for both of those and we had already borrowed the money at that point, that those authorizations should be rescinded.
That's right.
And that money should not be expended on those vehicles.
That's basically the process.
Right, I just couldn't remember where it came from, whether we had attributed it from one of the stabilizations or whether it came from borrowing. So that's what I was.
Jenny's got a little bit more information.
Yes, please.
One of the cars came from capital stabilization. $40,000. That might have been both, but I have that, I have that down. So will that go back into stabilization?
I would think so. Well, as Councilor Forchy. Well, as, as Counselor Forgie said, if we, we haven't borrowed it, then we can rescind it.
Rescind the order. Excuse me, President.
Yes, and then if Director Gilman wants to weigh in, because she looks like she wants-
Yes, I was just gonna say that she's, she's looking for that. Thank you, that's all I wanna say.
So, anything from a stabilization fund? You can vote it back in. It's, it's only a majority vote to vote it back in, or you could vote to close it to the, the general fund. It hasn't been spent if we have the grant, so that is one possibility. So we, or it could be repurposed. You have, as Counselor, if you've seen some repurposing going on, but we could put it back in capital stabilization. Something discussed with the mayor and figure out what's the best move strategically. But we don't spend something that we don't need to.
Just a follow-up for Liz, please, and please excuse me, for people that are waiting. You said we could repurpose, does that mean that it has to come back to council for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and also even putting it back in capital needs to come back for a vote.
Ms. Clerk Scott is reminding me that we're gonna have a first reading, a second reading, a public hearing, not in that order, but in that order, okay.
Should I do the second or let the other, or let Counselor Pinsky go and then come back?
Is it on this topic?
No.
Okay, let's go with Counselor Lapiansky, then I have Counselor Bottomley, then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
So Mayor, my first question is, do you intend to reopen Court Square for the winter as you did last winter?
Yes.
When?
I thought it would be done by now. It, it, it is tied to, right, it is tied to both the farmer's market and the events that we have on Halloween Eve. So, yeah, it typically happens by the end of October.
Okay. And I thought I had another question, but I can't remember it, but my opinion, you didn't answer fully Counselor Gullub's question, and, because she was talking about the slice of the pie, which is different than amounts. And so if we were to increase the slice of the pie, we could dramatically raise taxes, we're probably not gonna do that. We could also reduce other areas to increase that slice of the pie. Have you considered that?
I haven't for the upcoming year. I consider it as I am doing the budget.
Sure, and I remembered my other question, do you have any progress on finding a new finance director?
I do, some. We have, it's been quite an interesting process since Liz thinks she retired in December. And we've been looking since February. And we've made a couple of offers and have not been able to come to, come to an agreement with at least two, I think actually three, different people. So we went out again for another round, and I'm happy to say that this time around, we had two very good candidates. And as of this afternoon or tomorrow, we will make an offer to one of those two candidates. And I, I truly hope that person accepts it, because it's time for us to have a new finance director. Nobody wants one more than I do, and not, not that we, we don't all love Liz, and she'll be around to help that person transition. We've already discussed that.
So on this topic, it looks like there's some interest in following up, is that correct?
My question was a follow-up to Counselor Lapiansky's question.
Oh, your mic isn't on, though.
It's just me. My question is, when you said that you had a process where we made some offers and those offers weren't done, was it based on salary? Was that the, was that the obstacle?
Actually, I mean, I'm trying to think. No, not really. To be quite honest, when you go out for a, well, probably for any position, really, but especially for positions at the level of finance director or one of the higher-paid department heads, you're looking at people from all over. And when I say all over, one of my requirements is they had to have had some experience with mass general finance, because we all know how complicated that is. So we got applications from, you know, people that thought because they had worked in the finance department in a big corporation, that they knew somehow or other how to work in a municipality, and they had no municipal experience. So most of it was about a commute and how they might be able to navigate commuting if they didn't want to leave. So the person who, one person was from East Long Meadow that didn't want to do that. One person was from Great Barrington, and another person was from, in the Boston area somewhere. And we were certainly willing to offer a type of flex schedule, type of work-from-home schedule, but at the end of the day, the finance director who manages people in several departments needs to be in the building for a certain portion of the day. So we couldn't, in general, come to commute, come to, come to an agreement on, on how that would work out. Or they just simply decided they, after all, they were pretty happy where they were at the end of the day. But no, no one, no one brought up salary, because we, we are willing to negotiate the salary, and we have some ability to do that.
All right, moving on from this topic, next I have Counselor Bottomley.
The first is just a comment. I wanna make sure everyone knows that the PIP process is non-functional, and I believe we have requested DEP to take over that process, because we receive absolutely zero communication, zero communication from the LSP or RAFER. So I just wanna make sure that's clear, because it sounds like there's a cooperative process there going on, and there is not. The second question is, I don't understand your claim of ignorance regarding the schools. You've been on the school committee, you've said that numerous times for now three, almost three years, and it's not a mystery that the teacher's contract is going to come up. We heard tonight that it was a relatively simple calculation, these requests for increases in wages. So why would you put forward orders for contract stabilization that's so small and obviously inadequate?
So I don't think anybody, including myself, I certainly didn't use the word ignorance. What I said was, I do not have and have not had the benefit of a, of being at the table for finance, for contract negotiations. I have asked for an update on the teacher contract negotiations and have been told that I would receive it, as would all of the members of the school committee in an executive session in November. So what I'm saying is, is quite different from ignorance. It is saying, I do not have the information I, I could have in order to, to do that. Why am I, there's only, I don't know where the amount of money that, and Chair Poirotti readily admitted she was out of her lane. I have never heard the amount of seven or eight-hundred-thousand dollars in contract stabilization. No one has approached me with that amount of money, no one, to my knowledge, has asked myself or Director Gilman as to whether the city, the taxpayer, could bear that. So I simply don't have the information. What we're bringing to you is an amount of money out of free cash, and we were lucky this year to have a lot of free cash. So we are able to take that money from free cash and put it into contract stabilization. It would be a significant discussion to, I mean, wander, to even try to figure out where the additional amount of money that was talked about would come from. I, I'm not saying we couldn't have that discussion, or that we couldn't come up with that, but I think it would have to do, it would bear heavily on the taxpayer. It might require a two-and-a-half override. It might require layoffs. It, it could have a, a number of ways in which it could be done, but none of them, in my mind, without some pain, because we don't truly have money falling out of the sky.
May I have a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
This is regarding, I just wanna follow up on what Counselor Lapiansky said. Do you agree that as chief executive of this, of this city, you are the one responsible for dividing up the pie and deciding how much money gets allocated to our schools?
No, I wouldn't agree to that one hundred percent, because the school committee should have a role in deciding what the ultimate school committee budget is, and we can have that discussion as a committee. And then that budget would come to the, to the town, to me.
There any questions for the mayor before we move on to David Singer, wanted to talk to us about the, I'm sorry, that's right, I had to tell you I would get back to you, and I didn't put you on my list.
Totally unrelated, but kind of funny segue about almost where, where these questions should lie, on which committee, whether or not the mayor can make this sort of decision, or, or whether it goes to, back to the school committee kind of budget. My, my question is, in the, what, nine, nine months that I've been here so far, a lot of the, the typical, probably at least two hours plus of public comment, seems a lot of time to focus on topics that we as a council may not have the authority to, to deal with, but also, at the same token, very appreciatively, from the public is, is recognizing that we are the only sounding board for them to air their grievances. So I guess my question would be, would you consider hosting a once-a-month forum for public comment where people could ask you the questions that they essentially ask for you through us, and therefore, and this is not out of being like, well, I don't wanna sit here and listen to public comment, has nothing to do with that. I appreciate the comment, but when most of the questions are being directed essentially towards the executive branch, we can't get to city council business a lot of times for the first two-and-a-half, three hours of our meeting, and then, as we've all seen, are now, are staying till midnight. And it's not, it's not a gripe, it's just kind of a, out of a sense of efficiency that if you're gonna ask the question of a person or a body, I think that there should be an avenue to address that person or the body directly. So I was, I'm essentially asking if, if that's something you would consider adding as like a monthly thing.
I appreciate your asking that question. Just so you know, the public body communicates with us on a regular basis as well, and we do try to communicate back with them in a timely fashion. I, I'm gonna get to your answer, or to your, I'm gonna get to an answer to your question. I'm not sure if you are asking, so it's a question to get to the answer to your question. I'm not sure if you're asking your colleagues if they wanna have a second meeting on a, every other monthly basis in order to receive public comment that I would attend to and be allowed to, to respond to, or if you're saying, does the mayor wanna have community meetings? Yes, I have, so I'm not sure what it is you're asking about there, and that's for, maybe for a conversation for not right now, but I'm happy to have that.
It was, it was the latter. I know that the public can communicate with you on a daily basis, but they're coming to you as-
Not person-to-person, no. I mean, they, they do it through email, sometimes through phone calls, mostly through email, yeah, or grocery store aisles.
Right, and they could come to you through, you know, coming to the mayor's office, but as a collective, they can't hear each other and get the feedback from others the same way that they do in a public comment forum. So yes, my question was the latter of that, is if you would be willing to host a, a public comment session, that would be with questions more directed towards your office, and therefore, when public comment comes to the council meeting, it could be more focused to things that we could, that has more, that we would have more input into, or more, I don't know, not to say say over, but more, yeah, we'd be able to be more engaged with. A lot of times the comments come up that, like I said, it's literally just a sounding board.
That's a question for the mayor.
Yeah, right, right.
That's a question for the mayor.
So that's why I'm, I'm-
I understand.
And I know we haven't had that function in the past, so-
Yeah, no, that would be something probably very different from what's happened, so I would, so when, for the first two, almost two, well, certainly for the first two years, certainly the first year and a half of my term in office, no one was talking to anybody in a personal way. We were all on line.
Sure.
So the city hall was an empty, empty space. I was there every day for every one of those days that I wasn't on vacation, which didn't happen that often, because why would you go anywhere where you couldn't really be out and about? So, yes, I would be willing to do that. In fact, I'd be happy to do it. It can't be, it would have to be maybe monthly, maybe every other month, something, something on that order, because I have been giving that a great deal of thought as to how do we get out, all of us? How best do we get out into the community? Whether it's precinct meetings, whether it's inviting, you know, we have nine precincts, not everybody's eye, concerns are, and I do wanna reiterate, people bring us concerns all the time, are the same. As long as those were productive discussions versus attacks on the executive branch, or attacks on the legislative branch, for no other reason other than to do that, then I would think I would be more than happy to be part of those types of conversations.
Thank you.
May I follow up on that?
So I had a couple people, I think Penny was trying to follow up on this, right? Or did you have a separate question?
I have schools and that, so.
Okay, go ahead and follow up on this, and then we have a couple of others. I saw Counselor DeSorger, Counselor Lapiansky, and then was it Counselor Gullub or Gwen that I saw?
Okay, so I just wanna thank you, Counselor Toronto, for bringing this up. I think it's very important that this happen, because I feel the same way. I don't mind that public comment takes up the first two to three hours of our meetings, and we don't get to start till later, we just don't have much brain matter when we're talking about millions of dollars. So yes, it's important, especially when we have big dollar things, like we have to discuss tonight. We do need to have a question period where the public can come and say things to you. My second part is about the schools. You said that you weren't part of the negotiation-
All right, I'm gonna ask you to hold that thought, because there were some other people that wanted to-
Oh, just about this part?
Yeah, but I will come, I'm gonna come back, I'm gonna write you down, unlike-
Okay, I'll come back to that, yep, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, Counselor DeSorger, I had you next, then Counselor Lapiansky.
Hearing the concerns that we had about the amount of contractual stabilization, would you be willing to, to increase that order, to change that financial order?
Yeah, can I get you to hold that thought? This is about, so- Because this is about, so Councilor Toronto was asking about those community meetings, and I think that people are trying to follow up on that. So next I had Councilor Lapienski, and then I'll put you in right after Penny.
So my follow-up, basically, I think that's a brilliant idea. I hope that we do that. And I just want to say, for like the particulars, I think the reason why it's important, the big difference between walking up to the mayor in a grocery store or emailing the mayor and having a public comment period is that that public comment period is on television. And so a lot more people get to see it. And 100 people who thought they were the only one thinking that gets to see there's someone else who's out there talking about it. So that's what I think the value is, and that's why I think we ought to do it. Does it have to be every month? I don't know. And while we're on the subject, wouldn't it be nice if city council got to respond to public comment?
We did at CRE, you should have came.
So that's an interesting comment coming from you, Mr. Lapienski.
All right, next I had Councilor Gulliver, and then we're going back to, oh, I'm sorry, was this a follow-up to? Okay, so Councilor Gulliver is on this topic, then you.
I'm actually on schools. I had a follow-up and then didn't jump in fast enough, so we can stay here for a moment.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I agree as well, Mayor, that it really is a very good idea. It has happened before. You were talking about how you could bring this all to fruition. There's a number of practices, things that we tried before, which is precinct. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have like precinct one and then precinct nine. But you can split them half and half, or you could, if three groups are having a similar issue, that's great. You could base it on topic. There's plenty of topic out there, so you could call it that way as well. The other thing that I think is very effective as far as communication is concerned is to schedule an afternoon. I know, I know what your schedule's like, but to schedule a certain section of time in the afternoon, maybe three to five, and just have people sign up for a quick, brief conversation with you in your office, a one-on-one. I think if you, if you go with the idea that the door is open and people can feel comfortable coming in, and yeah, sometimes you might have to throw people out, I get that part. But that works very much, that works as well. So all of those are great ideas. Really glad Mike brought it up tonight. And I think it's very doable, and I would recommend that you embrace it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Councilor Forgie. Regarding your latter suggestion, I have that in my calendar every other week from two to four on Monday afternoons for the public that wants to call Caitlin von Schmidt in my office and set up an appointment. And I have had many of those conversations since we started doing that for, I, several months now. I don't remember exactly when we started doing it. But it is there. As I say, the public is not shy about contacting the mayor's office, as I think you probably are aware. And when we can, if it's a specific, you know, question that can be answered in the moment or if it's, I would like to talk to mayor about, you know, the sidewalks in front of my house or the this or the that, we tend to try to slot them into those every other week in a month of two and a half, three-hour timeframes. One of them was this week. I did not have anyone come in.
I didn't know about it till now.
Yeah, I would, may I? I, I think this is great this evening because I wasn't aware that you were doing that. And I think that, again, we're in a public forum, this information's getting out, it's a win-win. Thank you very much.
I agree.
All right, next I had Councilor Ricketts, then...
Okay. I just want to circle back to the schools for one moment. I think I heard you say a couple of times that you don't attend the negotiation or the finance, so you might hear about it later. But considering how important this is, that our teachers are paid well, and we're working on staff, do you think you can go to those meetings, regardless if you're on those committees, or to go to every school committee meeting and just be present more in general, so you hear from them more? I, because I've heard more than once that you don't always go to these meetings. And right now, I feel like if we want more money for stabilization, so they will be taken care of, you know, we have to know that you as mayor are at every possible school-type meeting, so they know that they're being heard and that you're part of that negotiations as well.
I go to every school committee meeting that I am part, if I am in town. And the only times I'm not in town are if I'm on vacation or if I'm on, if I have another meeting. But that school committee meeting, every school committee meeting is in my calendar, and I am always there.
All right, I will look at it.
So that's on the school committee meetings. What I said was, I don't have a seat at the table for those negotiation meetings.
But could you, was my question?
Well, I certainly could. They are, it depends on when they're held. They're not held necessarily at, in the same way that you do. Those meetings can be held at two or three in the afternoon when there might be something else in my, in my calendar.
No, I'm working.
No, I can, I can certainly attend all those meetings.
Okay, then I take that back then.
The ones that are important.
Then I'm sorry, because I've been going to a lot of meetings and I have been going to some school committee meetings, but I haven't seen you at all of them, so I just wondered if maybe you just watch it later or something.
No, I'm at every meeting as long as I am in town.
Okay.
I was not at one special meeting this week because I had another appointment. It occurred, I believe, at noon. I think every, almost every school committee member would tell you I am an engaged member who sits there. And I hope the parents that attend those meetings or watch those meetings understand that I am at every school committee meeting. I think my track record there is pretty darn good.
Good. Thank you. I hope so. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I had Councilor DeSorger, and then Gulliver, and then Bullock.
Mine was just, would you be willing to change the, the financial order on the contractual stabilization?
Not at that, this time, because that order is in front of you for second reading coming forward, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe it was first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Clark Scott says we're having the second hearing and public, or sorry, second reading and public hearing tonight. And the vote. Okay, then I had Councilor Gulliver, then Bullock, and then I'll add you, Councilor Bottomley.
Okay. I would argue that, Mayor, that as the executive officer in this town, ultimately you are in charge of how the pie is divvied up. And I hear you saying it would take significant discussion to figure out how, from the city side, you can support the teachers' contract demands. And I heard the specific amount from Chair Priority of 700,000 to 800,000. And I also hear how complicated it is, and I don't know if that would meet the demands of both Unit A and Unit C. But, and I understand, Mayor, that you cannot right now change the current order for contract stabilization, but there could be another order. And our budget is a reflection of our values. And I plan to vote for the 2.5 million in capital stabilization in order to support the fire station. However, when we are allocating, I don't know what percentage that is, but say that's two-thirds of the free cash that we have to buildings and not to salaries, that's a reflection of our values. And I would like to see from the city side, funding for the teachers. And so if I phrase that as a question, it's will you have that significant discussion with yourself, with your staff, with us to figure out how the city can support the teachers' demands?
My statement, if I recall, was I don't know where a large sum of 700 or 800,000 dollars would come from. It certainly can't come from free cash. I think you've been provided with a great deal of rationale for why the 4 million dollars in free cash is being allocated at this time. And that's an unusual number for us. We usually don't get that amount of money, which would be a good place for that to come from. But we're not going to get anything that approaches 700 or 800,000 dollars without a shortchanging elsewhere. So capital stabilization, if you, if you'll bear with me, is actually a good place for the 2.5 million dollars. Because when you're talking about buildings, we're not talking about buildings. We're talking about equipment for the DPW. We are talking about technology for the schools. We are talking about equipment for the health department. We are talking about vehicles for, for the police department or for... We have to take care of our infrastructure as much as we do our people. And we do do a delicate balance of how we, how we do that. I, the schools have many resources. They have a number of stabilization accounts of their own that they can draw from. So it is a conversation that has to happen between the schools and the city and certainly members of Ways and Means if we're going to try to change the formula. Because as I said, there's, there's going to be a, someone's going to have to pay. And it may well be the taxpayer, and it may be well, you have to be a question that we put forward to them. Because I don't see, at the moment, I don't see how we would put that kind of money into a contract stabilization fund. I just don't know where it would come from, and that's just me saying that. If somebody has a good idea and that doesn't shortchange all the other important things that we need to be keeping our eye on, then I think we'd be willing to hear it. But you have, you have what you have in front of you. I think that conversation is a conversation that, that needs to be had over a longer period of time.
All right, next I had Councilor Bullock and then Councilor Bottomley.
Sorry, I was on mute. There's a couple of things that have come up in this conversation for me. I want to echo the sentiment that Councilor Gulliver just gave around, it's confusing to hear you say, as the mayor, that you don't feel like you are the executor of the budget when through budget conversations, we, you know, we heard otherwise when we got the, when we got those budgets in front of us. I think that I, I want to echo something that I said during budget conversations. One of the reasons that I voted in favor of decreasing the police budget was because I think that we have an equity issue within our municipal departments. I think that there is some departments that receive much higher compensation than other departments. And I'm going to reference that same report that this, that youth-led organization sent us months ago that I reread this week, where they outline that there is a gender pay gap in greenfield municipal departments. And I, I just, it's not lost on me that our teacher workforce is largely a female-led workforce. And so I just want to echo the request and the ask of you to, for further capital stabilization, to give an equitable amount of increase for not only classroom teachers, but IAs as well. And I just, I do just want to share what Penny was, what I think Penny was asking you about going to contract negotiations. I had emailed with the teachers' union to ask if it was open as a city councilor, if I could attend contact, contract negotiations. I can't, but I think that as a, as a school committee member, if you're able to attend those negotiations, and as the mayor, I would ask you to attend those negotiations because I think it's vital to understand what's happening at, at the table in order to understand how we can increase our budget to meet the needs. And last, I just want to share, as Councilor Gulliver shared, like this has, this issue has a direct effect. I've tried to respond to every teacher that has emailed or every staff person that has emailed in the last few weeks about this issue. But similarly, when, as a resident, as a city councillor, I have a second grader who's in the district, and when he goes into school and we get letters back that says they don't, like, there's no name for a teacher in August when we get the letter for who, who he's going into, what classroom he's going into, right? Because there's, these are teachers who've left our district to go to other districts that are paying more. And that's not a guess. Like, I bump into these people at swimming holes, at Green River Festival. These are staff that are leaving our district and directly telling us. So I'm very concerned that if we don't give an equitable increase in these, in this department, we are going to have a mass exodus of teachers, even more than we already have due to COVID and due to the lack of funding. So I really just pushed that request. I know it's not easy to find money, and I know we can't do that. But I do think there's ways to increase the capital stabilization requests or other areas where we can, we can make this request more equitable for them and more close to what other departments have seen in terms of raises.
There was a lot there. Thank you, Councilor Bullock, for your comments. I'll just make two comments in regards to that, and then I think there's other people, and there's certainly a number of people behind me for, here for public comment. And we do have some business to do this evening. I, there's a lot of putting words in my mouth. I do know that at the end of the day, what you vote on is the mayor's budget. But I do want to remind you that every single member of the school committee, all elected by the people, vote that school committee budget that comes to the mayor. So they, if they want a different budget, and when I say they, I presume I include myself, but I think I'm thinking of the elected school committee members. If they want a different budget, then they need to advocate for it at the administrative level of the, of the school department. And I don't, I didn't see a lot of that going on this year, this past year. And maybe it did, but I didn't see a lot of it going on, and I was not part of it. So, meaning I didn't, you know, I wasn't aware that those conversations were going on at the time. The other piece of this seems to have escaped me, so. I just, the way we find money is we raise and appropriate it, and that goes to the bottom line.
Okay, next I had Councilor Bottomley, and then Councilor Healy had his hand raised. Is your hand still raised, or did you take it down?
Zoom's doing funny things. My hand is still, should be raised.
Okay, so Councilor Bottomley, then Healy, then Mayo.
This is a quick question. Regardless of your...
Regardless of your role on the school committee, would you consider scheduling more meetings or regular meetings with Superintendent DeBarge to discuss budget issues?
We have recently instituted a meeting of the Chief of Staff, the mayor, the Chair of the School Committee, and Superintendent DeBarge on a regular basis as our schedule allows. So I have to always say that because we are in a lot of meetings. So I think our intent is to have those on a monthly basis. We have had one. It resulted in some very good discussions that have to do with capital budgeting that you will see on your financial orders for November, I think. Right, Liz? Capital for the schools.
Yeah, we'll be submitting it next week.
Yeah, you'll be submitting, we'll be submitting next week. So yes, we do have that. It's not just around budget, but, you know, at the end of the day, it is kind of all about money. And so sometimes it will be, but it could be around other things, too. But those meetings are finally, at long last. I came to mind the superintendent has been here just a little over a year. She had a ship she had to right. So we've been kind of patient. We used to have School-City meetings. I liked those a lot. I think Counselor Ricketts, Counselor Forgie certainly participated in a few of those last year. They just didn't seem to be able to be held because of one or the other reason, having to do with scheduling in recent times. So we've gone back to the other format, which seems to be a little simpler. And there may be a way, and I think there probably should be a way, to bring that forward to, certainly to the executive committee level, subcommittee level chairs going forward if we have something. But typically, if they're going to result in some orders around money that come to you, they will eventually make their way to you.
Actually, I'm going to jump in because I have a follow-up on that one. So I've been the council president for 10 months now, and so far I've received two notices that those meetings were canceled, but not one single invitation.
Yeah.
Never received one.
Yeah.
So I don't have access to any kind of a calendar that I'm aware of.
There's usually a standing invitation that has been put into your calendar. But, no, you're right. Those are the meetings, President Gilmore, that I was just discussing, what we called the School-City meetings. I'm not 100% sure why they went away, except that we couldn't seem to get them scheduled for a variety of reasons. And those included, I'm all in favor of meetings, including counselors at your level, whether it's president, basically it's president and Ways and Means level. Now, they do occur during the day. Do you have insight?
I schedule those. The School-City meeting is something that was created by the previous administration, and it was actually one of the things we liked, and we started setting it up. I know with the previous council president, we had them on regular. And then when you were elected president, I think we changed over the folks on the meeting invite to the current leadership. And at that point, there was something with scheduling and then talking to the Chair Peretti that, you know, things had kind of, were different. We had a superintendent changeover, things like that. So it's possible that that just didn't get communicated. But, you know, using your counselor email address, you were put in place of the previous council president. I didn't also separately reach out, but I think we've communicated about those meetings.
Yeah, I've seen the cancellations, but I haven't seen a subsequent invitation.
And I think we had a conversation once, actually, where you were talking about, could we do it at a different time? And we were sorting around different times, and then we never had one because it was interfering with a work schedule thing for you. So, anyway, I'm just saying that those meetings have happened. And the only reason why I jumped in is because I feel like we're getting a little bit down in the weeds about some communication issues, and this is supposed to be mayor's updates, and we're talking about yeah, and we're just talking about, you know, kind of woulda, coulda, shoulda. I do want to also say, sorry, I'm out of order, Mayor. But some of the, you know, the suggestion by Counselor Tronzo and Counselor Forgie and Ricketts about the public forums, those are awesome, amazing things. I know that everybody's sick of hearing what the plans were in January of 2020 because everything is different now. But I was hired by this mayor as soon as she was sworn in, and one of the things we discussed was having an open and engaging conversation and having those meetings and having open office hours, having a forum on a regular basis. And I may sound offensive, but that's just because I'm a human being. But things got, I don't know if you guys remember, things got really, really weird really fast. And so that was all on, if I went through my notes, which, a lot of which I keep in City Hall, so they're public record for whenever I am gone, you can see the plans we had to do that. And I feel like we are all still, not just in government, but in the world, like reeling from what has happened in terms of the pandemic. These were all plans that had happened. And now we are in, we are still human beings in panic mode, catch-up mode from the plans that this mayor had. So she is, in fact, that is something that she had wanted to do. And so I'm glad that people brought it back up because it does sound good.
Thank you. And yes, once again, going back to the beginning, and thank you, Counselor Tronzo. Yes, we want to do that type of thing again.
Sorry about that. I had Counselor Healy and then Counselor Mayo. And Vice President Quinn, could you come fill in for me for a moment?
So I'm just leading off, going back to the school budget and, you know, contract stabilization. I think we're hitting the panic button a little too quick before we have all the statistics in front of us, right? So there are ESSR funds, and I went online and researched what Greenfield received for ESSR funds between ESSR I, II, and III, and it looks like you received $472,000 in ESSR I, $1.8 million in ESSR II, and then close to $4.1 million in ESSR III for the school, right? So, and that ESSR III funding has to be spent by May of 2023, I believe, is what I read. So without fully seeing the full school budget and how those ESSR funds are being distributed throughout the school budget for the next few years, and looking at what they have in their own stabilization funds, it's really hard to determine what we need in contract stabilization without that information, right? So they said 800,000, but we don't know what their other funds look like, right? So I think the best question to ask the mayor and hopefully the superintendent of schools when she can answer us is, can they start to be transparent what their budget looks like so we can make educated decisions on what we need to put in contract stabilization before we jump the gun? And that's all I really have to say.
I appreciate that, Counselor Healy. I do inquire about ESSR funds and how they're spent often at school committee meetings. We do see that on a regular basis. We get budget updates of school committee members. And I have communicated with at least one teacher. The ESSR funds are under the control of the superintendent. There is a significant amount of money there. I know that she has allocated much of it, or a significant amount of it in various ways that do benefit both learning and staff regenerating. The previous superintendent left the current administration with some big gaps to fill that were authorized, that could be authorized through ESSR funds. They are definitely one-time funds. Somebody made that comment earlier. But when you spend them on staff, people, and teachers, you do that with the understanding that you're doing it for the long haul and that the budget will, if you're doing budgeting properly, that the budget will have to make good on that, on those hires. So, but thank you for bringing up ESSR funds because I do think that's part of the clue as to how we come up with some additional funding.
Thank you. And let it be known, I do have four children in the Greenfield Public School system, so it is important.
Thank you. So next I have Counselor Mayo. And then if there are no objections, I would like to bring David Singer and Chief Stran up so that we can move on to the next topic. Counselor Mayo, you're on mute.
So in that vein, I withdraw my question in order to keep things moving. I still have some concerns, but many of the concerns were brought up by other councillors, and I don't want to do a repeat session of what they talked about. But I will say this one thing, is when we were talking about a new fire station and a new library, people were concerned about they were being taxed to the max and that they, at that time, Prop 2 and 1/2 override was not being talked about. And I don't think it should be talked about as a way to settle negotiations. I think equity within the department is a better method of doing that. So that's my quick little comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, David, would you care to join us? I know I called you up a long time ago. All right. Are you both coming up? Because then I'll move. Otherwise, I was going to stay here, but okay. All right, we'll go to the back. Do you want me here?
No.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me? That's good, okay. Thank you, President Gilmore, for letting us speak. So I ask that we all take a deep breath and focus primarily on the fire station vote tonight, okay? Thank you very much. Hopefully, this is the last time that I have to come before you in this capacity. My name is David Singer. I'm the co-chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. We met last month. I want to thank all of you, not only for your hard work, but for your continuing support for the fire station. So I want to begin with that. I'm here to discuss, obviously, 13 and 14 on the agenda. And I'm just asking you plainly, please vote to rescind the $500,000 for the library, and please vote to, in the same stead, borrow the same $500,000 for the fire station. Now, Counselor Forgie spoke last night in Ways and Means at the end about the fact that there were two philosophies, two policy discussions at the Ways and Means. The Ways and Means, you'll find out, the vote was three to two in support of the borrowing because of this philosophy difference. And the two philosophies are to borrow or to pay as you go. I'm here to say and discuss why I think borrowing is your best bet under these circumstances. Not that pay-to-go is a bad philosophy, but that under these circumstances, borrowing is your best route to take. So when you get to that point in the discussion, hopefully you'll hear the things that I've said, and they can be building blocks for your discussion. First of all, the Library Foundation has provided a million dollars to the city. So that means that the library budget, the borrowing for the library, couldn't go down without any problem, and you have an extra $500,000. So that's one piece of good news. And the second piece of good news is you have $4 million of free cash. Now, I know that also lends itself to discussing the idea of spend as you go, but I want to point out why that helps the borrowing piece. So I think that the borrowing of the $500,000 will not materially impact the taxpayers, which I think is one of the concerns of pay-as-you-go, and I'll discuss why. One is there's no net level increase in the borrowing. So you're rescinding one amount of money and you're increasing another. If you're concerned about the higher interest rate, it's my understanding that the interest rates don't fluctuate that far. And plus, there's a bond premium that will help offset that extra expense. But most important, and the reason we're here tonight asking you specifically to vote this way and not to let this go on to a pay-as-you-go discussion is because we really need the money now. And this is why we need the money now. The money is earmarked for the FFNE, the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And as you know, there are time delays in getting these kinds of things. And so the sooner we know we're funded, the sooner we can order those materials, number one. Number two, we all know that inflation is impacting us even at this level, and that the sooner we order goods, the better we'll know that those goods will not go up in price. And the third thing is that we want to have the timing of the ordering of those materials to coincide with the building of the fire station and the completing of the fire station. Right now, we anticipate that we're already four months behind in the temporary fire station period of time. And every month that we wait will cost the taxpayers another $45,000 to $50,000. But the final piece, which kind of ties into the discussion that you just had, is that if you borrow, you will free up $500,000 to put into stabilization or to put into an account. So for one of the rare times that I know of, and I said this the other night, you can have your cake and eat it, too. You can actually borrow without inflicting any pain and still be able to put money in reserve. Okay? So that's my pitch. I'm hoping that during your discussion, you'll discuss this. You'll probably hear from pay-as-you-go people. And, you know, I haven't heard yet from them a compelling reason why that should be the main thrust instead of the borrowing. So we'll hear from them tonight. But I want to thank you for listening, and again, thank you so much for all of your support.
Thank you. And I want to just echo what David said. Thank you very much for your continued support to this project and the reassurance that have been made regardless of what happens tonight, that we'll find a way to finish the project, and I do appreciate that. I've spent hours upon hours talking with Liz Gilman about the financing for this project so I could understand, and bonds and bands and everything else that goes with it. And I'm going to tell you, I'm still confused. And I've spent a lot of time to do this. My only comment that I really want to make is Liz is a pro. You know, I do my budget, and I craft it and adjust to it daily, weekly, if needed. But Liz does the whole city. And when Liz is adamant that this is the best way to do it, how do I argue with that? And she's adamant that this is the best way to do it. So I just, my only comment is I appreciate everybody's stance in regards to borrowing versus not borrowing. I understand that argument. But Liz has made some good points, and I just hope that that's considered in your discussions tonight. So thank you, and thank you for everything that you've done for the fire department. It's truly appreciated by myself and all the firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure there are questions. There aren't? They don't have questions for you, believe it or not. Oh, Counselor Golub has a question.
This might be for the mayor, so you can receive it, but I'm not sure where it goes, and you all can decide.
Well, ask the question, and then we'll decide.
That sounds good. Yeah, so I was one of the two people, as you very well know, who voted against the borrowing because I can't in good conscience vote to borrow money and impact the taxpayers in that way if we don't know where the money is going to. And you just made the point that that frees up $500,000. Nowhere in the discussion so far have I heard that that money goes to a specific place. But if I heard that that money, that we had assurances from the mayor that that money would go to the schools, I might reconsider. And I hear, I see you shrug, Mayor, but I'm learning municipal finance, and I didn't ask that question because I didn't think that that was possible. But if I heard an assurance, and maybe Danny, you want to answer that, that that was possible...
That's amazing.
Okay, sure. But I would want, in order to vote that way, I would want the mayor's word, or Liz's word, or like, I would want an assurance that $500,000 would go to the teachers. I don't know if that's possible, and I don't know that that's on you.
My understanding is that right now, the $500,000 is in the capital stabilization monies that are before you, okay? So I would say this to you. Because the process of the city council is slow and tedious, if you were to say, "I have to know one thing before I do another," it's going to take a tremendous amount of time for that to happen. On the other hand, you could vote for the borrowing, and then you have time, as you move forward, to deal with the mayor on how you want to allocate her request for stabilization. So I don't know if she would, I'm not speaking, now she needs to speak for herself, but I'm saying if you make it the way that you're presenting it, it's going to take a long time to iron that out. And the fire station, we need so desperately to have that money and move ahead. We need to be out of your face, and we need to build the fire station. So that's really why we came to you with this idea. And the other things you're talking about, from my experience as a councillor, you can have that discussion for another day and still protect yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could weigh in. And also, I think Director Gilman, she looks like she wants to speak to us, too.
What I was going to say is probably it is more of a Liz question. The 500, I think I heard you say to go into contract stabilization. But right now, both of those $500,000 pieces are attached to capital projects, and I think they would have to stay with capital projects. But I don't know that for certain, so I'll turn it over to Liz if she has an answer. She may ask you to repeat your question.
No, I actually, oh, yeah. I'm actually agreeing with David Singer that there's too many pieces that you're trying to tie together. And honestly, for everyone who feels this is borrowing, it's really more of an authorization so that, as the fire chief stated, they can go ahead and order some things. There will not be death service on this, and I don't know how I can explain that more. But basically, when you authorize that, you don't go out the next day and borrow it. Each year, whoever is in charge of the capital project will speak with the treasurer to see how much they will spend in one year, and that's all they borrow, is to come from a cash flow perspective, to make sure at the end of the year, you're not in the negative. So honestly, I truly believe that either between the bond premium and some other regular paydowns, there's not going to be death service on this. And that's why I presented it this way, because there are other needs. This kind of takes care of itself. And as you just heard, we got a $700,000, $800,000 request tonight that we hadn't heard before. So really, I didn't want to hurt other departments as well, including the school department, who are bringing capital projects forward, that if you're not going to authorize any borrowing, where else is it going to come from? So you really need to think about it that way. And I would like to have a longer conversation. I don't want to drag this on, but we should have a conversation about contract stabilization and how the whole process works, because that also is a one-time fund. But that's another discussion, because it will be a long one. Right now, we're voting on the, or hopefully, voting on the rescinding and the borrowing authorization.
All right. Thank you. Were there any other questions regarding the Fire Department or the fire station? Okay. So we're about two hours in at this point. Why don't we take a very quick break? Please don't wander away too far before we start public comment, because we've got a very long list here, and we're going to be sitting still, getting stiff. So five-minute break. It's 8:26 right now. Everyone should be back in their seats at 8:31. And did I correct the record? It is the first reading that we're doing on contract stabilization tonight, not the second reading. It's 8:33. That might be a record for us, guys. We're doing good. All right. So we're starting public comment. I'm starting with Greenfield residents. That is in our most procedure. So first, I'm going to do a few who are here in person, then I'm going to switch to our online folks, and then back to in-person. So first, I have Carissa Clifford, and next up is going to be John McGee. So John, if you can sort of like, start wandering closer.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Clifford, and I live at 390 Mohawk Trail. At previous city council meetings, I spoke about property rights and non-governmental organizations. These may seem to be unrelated, but each is a part of one plan. This plan was commissioned by a small group of elitist central bankers and created by the United Nations. This is a plan in which the 1% dictates to the 99% how we are to live. One of these bankers, Nathan Rothschild, stated, "Permit me to issue and control the money of a nation, and I care not who makes its laws." After signing the Federal Reserve Act, which established the world's most powerful privately-owned central bank, Woodrow Wilson said of these bankers that our government had become one that's, quote, "by the opinion and duress of a small group of dominant men." This small group drives federal and state policy through lobbyists and the funding of both parties' political campaigns. No one enters an elected position without their consent. They have founded thousands of NGOs, and under the guise of philanthropy, they are funding these groups who are remaining anonymous. Members of these organizations are touted as being the utmost experts in each field, and because of that, our state and local governments bow down to these NGOs and allow them to set all policies. The funds they receive trickle down to the towns, which of course is needed, but they come with the stipulation that you must do what they want you to do with these funds. These 1% are incredibly intelligent, and they have used psychology to persuade us that if we don't agree with their plan, then we must not believe we have a responsibility to our environment. We must be ignorant, or worse, we are selfish and therefore deserve social shaming. The plan they've created for each city and town is called the master plan. It seems innocuous, but if you pay close attention, you will see that the devil is in the details. Land conservation translates as increased regulations, or in other words, increased control. I've read Greenfield's master plan, and I see nothing about protecting property rights. I decided to research other cities and found that Chapel Hill, North Carolina, Mesa, Arizona, and even Singapore all have comprehensive master plans, which are nearly identical to ours. There is no denying, this is a global plan. A complete dissolution of property rights is an integral part of ensuring this plan's success. The head of the World Economic Forum and a top leader of the UN named Klaus Schwab is quoted as saying, "You will own nothing and be happy." As I've said before, private property rights are a fundamental pillar of freedom. A proposed zoning ordinance change to Section 200-7.1 will be coming before you soon, and it aims to gnaw away at this precious right. And one last thing before I go, and I know that I'm about to upset most of my friends, but all of this social collectivism and big government sounds like a utopia, but a quick look at history shows how dangerous this can be if put in the wrong hands. It might not be as clear in Massachusetts, but people in this country are raising up a man as a savior. Think about that. It's just as much of a delusion as thinking that socialism will work to create equality. It doesn't matter who's elected in '24. We are knee-deep in the elite's plan. Even though I know we are circling the drain, I still have a glimmer of hope that we in Greenfield will have the wisdom and courage to take a stand and protect our freedoms. A good place to start is to vote no to any changes made to zoning ordinance Section 200-7.1 and protect our private property rights.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. Next, I have John McGee, and then Judy Bennett.
As always, thank you for the hard work you do for our city. First tonight, I ask you to vote no and abandon the mayor's requested police audit. I spoke with a city councillor from Burlington, Vermont, where they conducted a police audit last year from the same company that she has in mind. The councillor said that the audit's recommendations were good, but that the mayor and police chief worked repeatedly to undermine the audit through delays and withholding information. Now that they have the audit in hand, the chief and mayor are cherry-picking the recommendations they like while obstructing all the recommendations that the community wants implemented. We have no reason to trust this mayor or chief to do anything that's not already on their wish list, and we don't need a lot of taxpayer money to enable them further. Second, the mayor has signaled that she'll consider a forum to directly address the concerns of the public. That's welcome news. Let's set a date. We have lots of questions with nowhere to ask them. We just want straight answers with evidence. We don't want screening of the questions. If she has legitimate defenses of her actions, let her share them publicly. One last thing, and this is familiar territory, I know it's not your purview, but I will say that Hague must resign. I don't care if he believes he's a racist or not. What he believes about himself and his heart of hearts is not how we, as a city, make decisions, decisions that can have deadly consequences in people's lives. He has a track record of failure and negligence. He's had ten years to address the gross racial disparities in GPD enforcement, pulling over and arresting black people at much higher rates than white people. Ten years. Even beyond the question of racism, he's enabled serious wrongdoing by GPD officers by failing to discipline them. He retaliated against a resident who experienced serious mistreatment by officers. The chief has had many chances to do better, and it's time for him to go. We're supposed to believe he's a good guy and concerned about the community, and frankly, this whole episode proves a lie that community policing is really not about community. It's a PR game to burnish the image of a police force that's facing criticism that they're unwilling and unable to respond to. They want to keep their salaries, their impunity, their ability to bully anyone in town who crosses them. And I don't know about you, but this doesn't make me feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Judy Bennett, and then Luke Martin.
Hi, I'm Judy Bennett. I live on Conway Street. I'm an educator at the Greenfield High School. I just want to start by saying thank you from the bottom of my heart. I am really hearing that a lot of you are in support of your schoolteachers. And I know a lot of educators across the country are facing very different school committees, and so I just want to recognize that. I want to bring a couple of things that I brought to the school committee when I spoke there last week. There were a couple releases from the White House in October and in August. The three Rs. Recruit, respect, retain. Pay teachers a livable and competitive wage. Secretaries Cardona and Walsh are encouraging governors and district leaders to use the American Rescue Plan's elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, that's the ESER funds, and the $350 billion in state and local fiscal recovery funds to increase teacher pay. So ESER funds to increase teacher pay. That's from the White House. Okay? I also just want to say, along with the three Rs, we had a staff meeting today, and some of our conversations were around our students, obviously, right? And as many of you know, our students are coming with trauma before COVID and post-COVID, or during COVID, I don't know. We're still in it, right? And along with the trauma, we need to build trust and build relationships with our students. And when we have a lot of teacher turnaround, it's hard to build that trust, right? It's hard to serve our students well. So with trauma and trust and turnaround, it was interesting that in the redistricting plans, a lot of the slides were talking about homes and home values and enrollment. And speaking to what councillor Gollub was saying, like, people aren't going to move here, right? Schools are the barometer of the community. So people aren't going to come here and bring their students, bring their children, into a community that isn't supporting their educators. Couple more things, right? $4 million in free cash, $200,000 to the Contract Stabilization Fund. I find it really hard to believe that our contract is out of date 476 days. So our Unit 8 contract expired 476 days ago, and I find it hard to believe that there hasn't been some back-of-the-napkin math to figure out what those numbers should look like, what the Contract Stabilization Fund should look like. $200,000, isn't it? Right? I think everybody knows that. Other school districts are facing similar things. You've probably seen it in the news. Amherst, South Hadley, Irving, Pioneer, Malden, Haverhill, right? Teachers were going on strike. I think those contracts have been resolved. But recruit, respect, retain, and I want to be able to trust my elected leaders, right? I want to be able to trust, and I do feel that you're coming from a good place, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Luke Martin, and then we're going to go online. All right. Folks, I know everyone wants to support each other, but we can't have applause in between because it's just decorum. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Luke Martin. I live in Greenfield, and I'm a teacher at the high school. This isn't how I was going to start, but I want to be clear that our contract is a year and a half expired. So I personally don't think we're jumping the gun and considering how to fund a fair contract. I also find it astounding to hear the mayor claim ignorance of the state of negotiations and what might be required to fund a fair contract. I've been involved in at least three or four rounds of contract negotiations in my time in Greenfield, and the second money was discussed, the mayor was always there. I don't find that to be a reasonable excuse for why only $200,000 has been allocated from this free cash. Anyway, what I wanted to say, I have two children here in Greenfield schools. My daughter had an absolute hero of a teacher during the remote school year, who kept a five-year-old interested, curious, engaged, and connected for seven months through a computer screen. I don't know how he did it, but I was completely in awe. Unfortunately, that teacher has left Greenfield. My daughter also had a successful return to first grade with a great teacher, excellent IA, who stepped in as a long-term sub, and a great reading teacher who she connected with. All three have left Greenfield. This year, she was supposed to have a certain second-grade teacher, but she also left Greenfield. So we got a similar generic welcome letter from second-grade teacher rather than a real person. Her school has also lost first and third-grade teachers. It's a small school. Parents want stability. Students want stability, and we, as a staff, want stability. Losing good people, as we have in Greenfield, is a problem. School and town leaders should be doing everything possible to recruit and retain good teachers. But here we are, a year and a half after our contract expired, and hearing that there isn't enough money available in the contract fund for reasonable cost-of-living adjustments. This is what drives teachers away, not being valued enough as professionals to have valid, up-to-date contracts, not being valued enough as professionals to be compensated in a way that reflects the nearly impossible job we've been doing since the pandemic hit. I'm asking the mayor to make it a priority, because we no longer believe that there isn't enough money. We no longer believe that because we've watched as school administrators have been hired at 20% to 30% higher salaries than their predecessors. And all administrators in our district regularly get 2.5% to 5% cost-of-living adjustments in their contracts. We've watched as Greenfield received over $6 million in ESER funds, which, as we've heard, was urged, the Secretary of Education and the White House urged school districts to use, partly to compensate and retain teachers, but Greenfield did not. And now we're watching the town have $4 million in free cash, which could be used to replenish the contract fund and provide reasonable cost-of-living adjustments, let's say hypothetically, the 2.5% to 5% that our administrators get. But as we've heard, the mayor's allocation of just $200,000 will not provide that for over 200 employees of Units A and C, not to mention the DPW workers, who will also deserve a contract, a cost-of-living adjustment soon from the same fund. Putting a small token amount into this fund will not do anything to retain good teachers. We no longer believe it is a matter of money. It's a matter of priority. Please make your classroom teaching... Please make your classroom teachers a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm switching to online speakers now. So first, I have Susan Morgaffic, and after that will be Molly Merritt.
Thank you very much. I truly want to say that I also appreciate the amount of time and energy it takes the city councillor here.
I'm sorry, I know you, but could you say your name and your address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Susan Morgaffic, Green, and I live in Greenfield. I live at Forest Avenue. I want to thank you. I want to talk about two issues. One thing is the police, and I also want to talk about what's happening with unhoused residents here because we are facing a problem. On the police, I would just like to echo what John McGee said, that the city council vote no to the proposed appropriations for the police audit. I don't have any confidence that that process would be fruitful for us as a community. I also would like to ask that you vote no on the compensated absences fund until there is clarity about what this money is going to go for and why. And then, and I am excited to hear that there may be some community forums that we can actually attend and talk to and talk with the mayor about. I am hoping that she would be actively engaged, and she would respond to questions and not merely listen to what we had to say. Thank you on that. On housing. The unhoused community here in Greenfield and in Franklin County is in worse shape than it was last year. The pandemic did ease somewhat, but we are now seeing an increase in evictions and are also finding no similar increase in available housing. The result is more pressure on shelters and other alternative settings. Last winter, during the coldest days, we had funding from the Interfaith Council and from the Commonwealth to house people in motels. That worked great. We did not have one person die during that period, and we did not even have anyone with frostbite. But we know this year is going to be different, and I'm asking you for your help. All the beds right now in the Well Street Shelter are filled, and they have been filled for months. All the motel rooms that we usually use during the winter are occupied, and we don't expect that that's going to change. And so, and this is also true throughout the valley. This is not simply a Franklin County issue. So we can't send people to Hadley or something. MJ Adams and I have been discussing this issue, and she believes that she can find space for housing people on very cold nights somewhere in town. The issue that we are coming up with is staffing those facilities. We need individuals and organizations to work with us to ensure that we have enough volunteers and social service staff to ensure that everyone will be safe. MJ is working on the social service end of things, but there are needs for volunteers who will help with such things as cleaning up after a meal, making sure that there's breakfast available for people at that site. Those kinds of support services that are different from the services that would be provided by professional staff. I believe that you as councilors have knowledge of organizations in your precincts and in the city at large that we may not have contact with.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that was time. I don't know if folks can hear the timer.
If I can ask you just to let me know if you have contacts of organizations or individuals who will help us make this all work. That's the reason I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Molly Merritt and then Rebecca Seifried.
Hi, this is Molly Merritt. I live on Solar Way in Greenfield. I am here to ask the council to vote against the mayor's proposed audit of the Greenfield Police Department. I believe this endeavor would be a waste of time, energy, and the city's money. We have pages and pages of documented wrongdoings by the Greenfield Police Department that came to light in the course of the Buchanan racial discrimination lawsuit. Instead of using this information to make changes within the GPD, the mayor has ignored the findings, going so far as to reinstate and stand behind a police chief who was found guilty of racial discrimination in accordance with laws. The mayor, who would direct the audit, would be the one to respond to any findings and is clearly only interested in returning to business as usual, which includes a near-complete lack of accountability for any wrongdoings perpetrated by the GPD. I urge the council to vote against funding this audit under this current mayor. Greenfield needs real conversations about community safety and the harms caused by policing. However, our current mayor is wholly unfit to oversee such a process. Please vote against the audit. I also urge the council to vote against the $200,000 for the compensated absences fund, at least until the mayor is transparent about what exactly the money will be used for. I am concerned that much of the money will be given directly to the GPD to make up for the principled budget cuts that the council made earlier this year. City employees should be paid what they are owed, but we need to know how this money is going to be spent before we approve this unprecedented amount. Also, going back to the conversation that you all were having about funding the wage cost-of-living increases for the teachers, I think it's really interesting to note that Greenfield does pay proportionally less to teachers than many of our surrounding towns, while the police department's budget is proportionally larger. And that's just something that I think we really need to shift in this town. I also want to express my support for the mayor holding a special forum to answer the public's questions, as asked for by many councilors by tonight. And as always, I want to thank the council for your hard work and your service to our community.
Thank you. Next, I have Rebecca Seifried. And then I'm gonna go back to in-person, folks, and the person after her would be Pamela Goodwin.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rebecca Seifried of Maple Street in Precinct 6. I'm here to ask the city council to vote no on the proposed appropriation for the police audit and the compensated absences fund. With regard to the police audit, we shouldn't be spending $100,000 when there are other parts of the city's budget that are in crisis, like as we've heard tonight, increasing funding to retain and attract good educators. We already know the police department has problems, and we don't need an independent audit to confirm that. The mayor and the police chief were found guilty of racial discrimination, and the police department has a history of protecting officers who actively harm residents through bigotry and intimidation. I ask the council members, do you really believe that the mayor will act on any audit findings? We already have incriminating information, enough to know that Police Chief Haig should not have been reinstated, and yet that is what the mayor did. An audit would simply delay the changes that can already be enacted. Chief Haig should not be the head of the department, and if the mayor won't remove him, he should resign. In short, we don't need an audit. We need the city's leadership to think creatively about how to redress the issues we already know exist. As for the compensated absences fund, I'd like to see more information about how the funds will be used. We've heard tonight the city has urgent fiscal needs, and it's concerning that the mayor is making a large request for funds she can use at her discretion. The council should have oversight into how these funds are intended to be used before you make the decision to appropriate so much money. Last but not least, on the issue of funding our teachers' salaries, the mayor asked, where would we find the money? I hear people dancing around the answer. I think the answer is the police department. We spend more on the police than we do on public works. Praise differently, we spend more on a dysfunctional, problematic department with a documented history of undermining residents' well-being than we do on building and maintaining our literal infrastructure. $600,000 or whatever, $800,000 is what's needed to keep our educators and to take the first step toward rectifying equity issues. That amount of money would be 16% of the police budget. It wouldn't mean as much to them as it would mean to our teachers. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Pamela Goodwin and then Ed Jarvis.
Good evening. As always, I want to thank you for all your hard work. This last week, I was at...
I'm sorry, can we get your name and address?
Oh, sorry. 54 High Street. And it's been a heck of a week because I was at Human Rights. I watched Ways and Means, but I didn't plan to. I was invited to a supper, and she had it on. And then Housing needed to show up, and we were on that Zoom. And tomorrow night, Housing gets to go to the planning board. And then I'm here tonight. So this has been, I think I'm living your life on a steady basis for this week. I want to say that the Human Rights Commission, that was my first chance to be there. I was very excited. It was a lot of give and take. It was raw discussion. And they only have about six members, and they're looking for more. They sometimes don't even have a quorum. So everybody in the community, sign right on up. And I can't, or I was thinking about it, but I can't. I also want to echo what councillor Bottomley said about the PIP. I thought maybe Susan was going to talk about the lump thing, but she's got a lot on her plate as well. As far as I know, we didn't get anything that we wanted. And I'm a member of that particular community, trying to deal with a serious problem, which was part of the topic at Human Rights Commission. I also want to finish up with Susan. The volunteers that she's looking for, once AJ finds the place, are only going to help clear supper, be able to sleep there, and then give a quick breakfast the next morning and still get to work. And they're not going to be dealing with any of the other issues. That's going to be what MJ is going to deal with. So if there's combative behavior or whatever, these are not, if I volunteer and I plan to, I'm not going to get involved in that. I'm done working at halfway houses that I did for many years. I want to say also, I'm in great concern about teachers in this town. I taught here in 1971. I was teaching in this area at Mohawk, at Greenfield, at Pioneer for almost 30 years. And then I got disgusted, and I left, and I became an educational consultant. And an elementary teacher hired me under a contract to go over here and teach little tiny kids French and Spanish. I walked in one day. It was one of the best jobs I'd ever done. Little kids are so much fun. They're like sponges. I walked in one day, and she said, "Sit down. They canceled your contract." They broke, the school committee broke my contract, fired the only nurse in that building. And I was like, "Well, I think I'll become a certified nurse assistant." And that was my last career, because now I'm retired. So I know that school committees struggle on budget. But it's really important to fund the teachers so they have. And then we have to find houses for them to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ed Jarvis, then Jesus Leva.
Evening, Ed Jarvis. 76 Plantations Circle. I get to sit on this side of the table tonight, so that's a change. And I promise I won't blind you when I leave with my headlights yellow, as I did when I pulled in. You can probably guess what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about two questions in front of you tonight, and that is to adjust the funding for the library and reappropriate the money for the fire department. I know there's a lot of you that I've heard, "Let's spend the $4 million." It's been $4 million. Well, we can only stretch that $4 million so far. You are asked to take money that's already been appropriated and just reassign it. We are not asking for new borrowing. We are asking to take care of the last 2.5% of the funding for the fire department. You're 97.5% of the way there. We're asking that you just make the other jump of the 2.5%. It doesn't add to the tax rolls. The borrowing is already in effect. All you're doing is taking from Peter and you're giving to Paul. It's done all the time. You have one smart lady in Liz that has told you that this is the way to go. She has led to the town to probably one of the biggest funds that they have available in free cash and $4 million. I don't think Greenfield's ever seen $4 million in free cash, ever. I've been around for a long time. Never have they seen $4 million. I implore to you to listen to her advice. Do the right thing. If you think that six months from now or eight months from now, that it's going to be cheaper, I can tell you, I sit on a job site, and I see prices go up and up and up. I deal with it every day, as councillor Healy does every day, and he can probably contest that. Prices don't go down. Prices go up. We get quotes. We get bids that say prices are good for seven days. Seven days. Not 30 days, not 60 days, not 90 days, not 120 days. Seven days quotes are good for. At the end of that, the quotes are no good. Supply chains. If you put off ordering the equipment that needs to be done because you don't fund it, I guarantee you that you are going to stretch the job out four to six months. I waited eight months for a door. A door. One door. It wasn't mahogany. It wasn't 10 feet. It wasn't six inches thick. It was one door. Six extra months. Eight months for another door. I am now waiting five months for a CT unit for a place to go online. I can't get power to it. The power company won't give up their generators or their transformers for me to power it until I get that equipment in place. So I implore you to vote yes, 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 and yes on the questions that are in front of you and do the right thing. Thank you for your time and your effort. Thank you, folks. I know it's a tough job I've sat over there.
Thanks, Ed. Now you get to go home. Next, I have Jesus. I wasn't sending you. Next, I have Jesus Leva and then Gary Selden.
Jesus Leva, 32 High Street, Apartment 6. I actually wasn't planning on coming tonight, and I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight. But here I am. The reason why I wanted to actually speak tonight is to what councillor Golub and other people were expressing around schools. When I used to live in Northampton, there were a bunch of parents and teachers who were very organized and motivated about the idea of sending buses full of people to the state legislature to advocate for more state dollars to go to local communities for school funding. Spoiler alert, they weren't that successful for having that conversation. I think if we... I think maybe we should be thinking about whether people in this community want to organize and reach out to other communities about trying to get more funding from the state to fund the schools, and whether we should be getting a bigger piece of the pie from the state. Because having, you know, all of these departments arguing and fighting for each other over the small piece of pie that, you know, taxpayers here in Greenfield are willing to provide, it's not really that good. I can't think of a way to say that. And then there's a question on the ballot before voters right now, which is question one. And it's about taxing people who can actually afford it. If we want to get more money to the state to possibly get more money to the schools, that's what we should be thinking about. I think everybody would probably want to see that question pass in this room, and I don't think it would actually affect the taxation of anybody in this room. So give that some thought. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have Gary Selden, and then we're switching back to our online folks for a bit.
Good evening, folks. Perhaps I can show my respect for you by being brief.
Sorry, can we start with your name and address, please?
Oh, yes. I'm Gary. And let's start with that. Gary Selden, Traverse Court. I hope that this evening, you will require all ad hoc committee recommendations to be entirely consistent with the November 21 ballot outcomes. I've communicated with you about these 7-7-7-8 issues. I so appreciate each of you for your service, and I'm particularly appreciative this evening of those of you who've noted that the voters have already spoken. Last November, the council used a ballot question to find out if Greenfield voters wanted to change the number of signatures required to start a citizens' referendum petition. The outcome was that the voters wanted to stay with what we have. Has anything changed since then? The question was asked and answered last November. The question is resolved. Recommendations to change the number of signatures required are out of order at this time. Now is the time to honor the will. Now is the time to honor the will of the voters. It's just too darn soon to entertain changes. It feels disingenuous to me to be asked a question and then have the answer ignored or questioned eleven months later. I think these charter sections could do to be improved, be simpler, and be presented in a much more citizen-friendly manner. I'm strongly in favor of that. The wording I've suggested protects the will of the voters while still allowing improvements to be recommended. Please require all ad hoc committee recommendations to be entirely consistent...
Not me.
With the twenty-one ballot questions. Hey, and on my way out, totally different. Wisdom that I gleaned from listening to some of the Buchanan trials. Hopefully this wouldn't be controversial, but the judge continually encouraged people to stand up and stretch. And Lord have mercy, I think you folks need that.
I make my folks some breaks. Thank you. All right. Now we have Greta Schultz, and then Rachel Gordon.
Hi, I'm Greta Schultz, Two Seventeen Elm Street. Thank you all for your time and effort that you're devoting to our community. I'm the parent of an amazing teenage son. He is African-American, and by reason of being a young black male, he's a member of one of the most vulnerable constituencies in our country, our region, our state, and our city. He's vulnerable to racism writ large, and more specifically racism perpetuated by law enforcement. Discriminatory practices within the Greenfield PD have been well documented through costly and time-consuming legal proceedings, and they're evident in Greenfield PD's own data. So I won't take your time to review that corpus of evidence that shows racial discrimination under Chief Haig's leadership. That's been compiled and it's available to any interested party, as you know. In my professional capacity, I sometimes work with organizations that are tackling challenging situations. And sometimes there's a temptation to continue to study the problem rather than moving towards solution, which is sometimes understandable. Conscientious individuals want to learn as much as possible before moving forward. With respect to the Greenfield PD, however, I suggest that we already know a lot. And for the sake of my son and his peers and the community as a whole, it's time now to stop studying the problem. So I'm here to ask the city council to vote no on any proposed appropriations for a police audit. We do not need to spend more time and money on studying problems. We do need to acknowledge and deal with the problems that we know about. Also, I see no reason to believe that the mayor would act on any findings from an audit, and we can't afford to give the mayor and the chief an excuse to delay. So rather than police audit, I ask that you do schedule and conduct meetings with the mayor, as was raised earlier, in which the mayor will hear the public's concerns and answer questions about public safety. As was raised earlier, public meetings are different from individual conversations because questions and answers take, take place in full view of the community. So please vote no on any proposed audit of the police department. And please do schedule as soon as possible and hold public meetings with the mayor on public safety in the interest of transparency and accountability on the part of town officials and law enforcement. Mayor, councilors, when will that first meeting take place? Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Rachel Gordon, and then, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Mariel Bajani. Rachel Gordon first.
Hi, good evening, councilors. Thank you for taking my comment. And as always, thank you for the hard work you do. Rachel Gordon, I live in Precinct Two in Greenfield. And I'd like to comment about a couple of things being discussed tonight, as others, it will echo some of the other comments that have already been made. There is a common thread running through my comments, which is that I believe that Mayor Wiedegartner is currently very focused on protecting Chief Haig and the police department, and that you, as the council, are the only ones with some real power to push back on that, at least until next November. And I, I really hope you will use the power you have to do that. And we are counting on you to do that. So issue number one is the police audit. Um, as I said last month, as others have said, we really encourage you to vote no on an audit. Uh, I know that many people, myself included, feel that we really need to do something about the police, absolutely. But there is no point in spending money to do something unnecessary and ineffective. Um, you know, we already know a lot about the problems in the GPD. We know that the mayor has no interest in addressing them, or she could have started to do so already. Uh, so there's no reason to think that she'll suddenly see the light and want to take action after an audit. Uh, but there's a lot of reason to think that she's happy to waste Greenfield's money on this, and that she'd be happy to have an excuse to delay taking action to address racism in the GPD. So again, I urge you and ask you to please vote no on an audit. Uh, the second issue is this wonderful idea for a productive public discussion with the mayor, in public and on the record, and not during most people's working hours. Uh, it is really important that the public has an opportunity to actually bring up our concerns and questions and get actual answers, not like we offer comment here sort of into a vacuum, although we do appreciate the, the opportunity. Um, and not in some scripted, you know, predetermined way where the mayor gets to pick the questions in advance. Uh, but we want a real dialogue that suggests that, that she gives the public as much respect as she clearly expects to receive. Um, it seems highly unlikely that she's going to give us that opportunity, so I would, I would implore the council to do so and to do everything in your power to make sure that the mayor actually attends such a meeting. Um, and third, I hope you'll ask the mayor to, a lot more questions before appropriating this $200,000 for the compensated absences fund, since you won't have oversight afterward over where that goes. I echo all of Molly's and other folks' concerns about that going to the police department. Um, and such a suddenly large appropriation to that fund raises a lot of questions, I think. Finally, um, I definitely just want to say, I definitely hope that you will appropriate all the necessary funds for the fire department. They absolutely need it. We all, we all need them to get that. Um, and that we will all do whatever is necessary to support our teachers to get the higher wages they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Mariel Bajani. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but could you state your name and your address?
Yeah, definitely. Hi, uh, my name's Meirai Bajani, um, and I live on Peabody Lane in Precinct Five in Greenfield. Um, and I want to start out by saying thank you so much, uh, councilors, for all the hard work you do. As others have pointed out, we know it's not an easy job. I'm here to ask you to, first of all, vote no on the mayor's proposed audit of the police department. Um, as folks have already pointed out, we've already learned a lot about the issues with the department through the Buchanan case, and we don't need to waste money and time on an audit to tell us more of the same. There's no guarantee the mayor will actually act on the findings, and based on her track record, I have no confidence that she would. So instead of delaying much-needed reforms to the department and throwing away taxpayer money, um, I hope you'll vote no on the audit and move forward with the changes we already know we need to address racism in our department, in our police department. Um, and then secondly, I strongly support the mayor holding a public forum of some kind, for all the reasons you councilors have raised and other folks have mentioned. Um, I'm glad to hear the mayor has some sort of recurring office hours, but it's obvious that tonight was the first time many of us, including Counselor Forgie and myself, heard of that opportunity for discussion. And as I well know from my day job as a community organizer, accessibility doesn't just mean opening the door for people to come in. It means actively going out and inviting people to engage. So I really hope the mayor will be more proactive about engagement with the community, and I hope the council will continue to encourage the mayor to engage more directly and do everything in your power to, um, encourage her to show up to a forum like what, what folks have been describing. Uh, and I, I want to close by echoing other folks' points on, uh, supporting our teachers and paying them, um, you know, equitable wages that we do that they need so we can recruit and retain, uh, good teachers for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Eileen Stoll, and then Glenn Ayers.
Hi, can you hear me?
You're very quiet.
Okay, um, is this better?
Shoot your outside voice.
Um, first I want to say thank you to the councilors. I know, um, I know even from just what I can see how many hours you spend of your lives doing this public service for us, and I'm sure there are many unseen hours also. Thank you so much for all that you do. I would like to echo what other people have said already in asking the council to vote no to the police audit and also to the compensated absences fund that would be exclusively at the mayor's discretion. Regarding the police audit, um, I too have lost confidence in the ability of this mayor to oversee an audit that is fair and impartial, as she has let her bias be known from the moment that the Buchanan verdict was made public. And I, I have no confidence that any amount of money that would be spent on an audit that she would oversee or be in charge of would lead us to the kind of changes we need to see in our police department and in our town. Uh, the problems in the GPD are already a part of public record. They're already well-known, and, um, I agree that we only delay progress by allocating resources to restudy them. And I guess I just want to echo what Counselor Golub said earlier, which is, how we allocate our budget is a matter of, uh, our values in this town. And what do we want to be known for? Do we want to be known for the town that pays teachers so poorly that our talented, gifted teachers are leaving one by one? Do we want to be a town that is famous for having a police department that is known to have serious problems with bias that is shielded from consequence by the mayor herself? Is this what we want to be famous for? Because people are not going to want to move to this town. Teachers are not going to want to teach in this town. People are not going to want to live here and pay taxes here, and businesses are not going to want to locate here if this is the kind of town that Greenfield is known to be. I ask you then, please, to vote no on the police audit and, uh, to the compensated absences fund. I welcome an open public forum from the mayor where she will be able to hear questions from the public and respond to them publicly and on the record, and not screened questions. And once again, I thank you, councilors, for giving me this opportunity to speak and for all the hours you put in for our community. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next I have Glenn Ayers, and then Kendra Servati.
Uh, good evening, councilors, and I'll echo previous speakers. Thank you very much for the hard work that you do.
I'm sorry, can we get your name and address?
I'm Glenn Ayers. I live on Davis Street in Precinct Three. Thank you. I do want to talk tonight to the, to the council to let you know that yesterday, the One Neighborhood Action Group submitted an application for a technical assistance grant to DEP. Uh, we asked them for $20,000 to help the residents in the, in the Lunt area to hire an independent LSP to get some control over the contamination at the Lunt site. Unfortunately, our mayor has refused to ask the council to allocate funds to hire an independent LSP. The city of Greenfield has not employed an LSP related to the Lunt project since prior to 2013. Since twenty, almost ten years, the city has essentially done nothing. And this mayor refuses to ask the city council to allocate some funds to hire an independent LSP, even though we know that the council would approve that request because we have a hundred and fifteen people who have signed on to the Public Involvement Plan petition. And you would think that would mean something, but obviously, we have a mayor who does not care, uh, just does not care. And more than that, she attacks people who do care. She wrote an opinion piece in The Recorder about a few weeks ago, attacking Susan Warghantik. It was obscene to read. It was so disturbing that she would use her authority, her position of power, to attack a private citizen and someone who does so much for this community. But anyway, I want the council to know that we are, as an organization, we incorporated, we have applied for this grant funding, and we hope that we will get the $20,000 and be able to hire an independent LSP. Unfortunately, that money will not be available until, uh, late spring of next year. And in the interim, we're in the same situation that we've been in for the past ten years, and that is that the city has done nothing to clean up Lunt. And it's really not going to clean itself up. So, if we can continue to request that the mayor come forward with a request for funding for an independent LSP, it would be greatly appreciated, and I'm sure the council would approve that request. So, thank you. We will keep you posted on the progress that we are trying to make on the cleanup of Lunt. And, um, we won't know if we get that grant until, um, at the end of this year. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Next I have Kendra Servati, and then we're going to move to out-of-town speakers.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. This is Kendra Servati. I live at, uh, Beach Street in Greenfield. Um, and I also want to join others this evening in urging the council to vote against appropriations for the police audit. I agree that there already exists plenty of documentation of issues that should provide a sufficient starting point to take action. Um, and I'd also like to voice my strong support for the establishment of regular meetings with the mayor and community members to create a space for a dialogue related to issues and ideas for improved public safety, as well as other matters. Um, thank you so much for listening, and thank you so much for all your time and all of your hard work.
Thank you. All right. So, our neighbors from outside our borders. We have Garth Brody, and after that will be Dave Metaloni.
Hello, I'm Garth Brody. Uh, I live in Turner's Falls, uh, and I am a teacher at Greenfield High School. Since the start of the school year, I, along with all my fellow teachers and instructional assistants, have been working without a contract, um, at GHS. The first quarter is almost over. November fourth is coming up quick. Still no contract. Will we have one by the time those quarter one report cards arrive at the homes of Greenfield Public School families? Seems like no. Uh, the problem we hear is money. There's not enough money in the city budget for the cost of living adjustments needed to maintain a highly qualified workforce. Well, on the subject of budget, I have two pieces of good news. Uh, first, we do have the money, over $6 million from Esser, almost $2 million through Chapter Seventy funding increases. And that's just the stuff earmarked for education. So, forget about the $4 million Greenfield holds in free cash and the $2 million currently in the General Stabilization Fund. Greenfield has the money to invest in education if we want to. Um, and it's been said a few times already tonight, that's kind of the key point. And this is my second and more vital piece of good news, is that a budget is not fundamentally a math problem to be solved. The math happens, that comes later, and there's very talented people who do that math. Um, but a budget is first and foremost a moral document. It is something that sends a message about a community's priorities and values. Um, as, again, it has been said a few times, Counselor Golub said earlier, that's what a budget is. So, for example, if a city budget does not compensate its teachers enough to retain them, then what is the budget telling us? What message is that budget sending? It's telling us that we don't value keeping our best, most experienced educators in the district, because that's who leaves first. They will go to a district that pays higher. Um, it is telling us that ridiculously high turnover is acceptable, and so is the unstable school environment that results. If a school district's budget does not include enough money to recruit new instructional assistants, then what is that budget telling us? What's the message that we're sending with that? It's telling us that we don't think we really need to support students with special needs. It's telling us that students with 504s and IEPs that need accommodations in the classroom to learn with equity with their, with their classmates, um, they should just make do. Is that the message you want to be sending, that we want to be sending as a community? Because educators, students, families are listening. Because educators, students, families are listening. So to the city council, to the school committee, and especially to the mayor, I urge you to invest in education. If a budget sends a message, I urge you to send a better message.
Thank you. Next, I have Dave Mataloni, and then Julie Erickson.
Hello, my name is Dave Mataloni. I live in Northampton, and I'm a proud special ed teacher at Greenfield High School. I want to thank all of you for your service, and I especially want to thank Councilor Golub, who took a lot of my words out of this, and all of you who have spoken in favor of the teachers. To just build on what you said, if you're a young couple with kids and you're thinking about where you're going to set roots down, are you going to choose Greenfield? Isn't education the first priority of a family that's moving somewhere? What's the reputation of that school district? And who would choose Greenfield today? And it's going to get worse because of the retention and the loss of teachers. The other thing I want to say is that my colleagues have covered a lot of this, and I just want to talk about what happened in this meeting tonight. I'm not going to put any words in the mayor's mouth. I'm going to talk about what she didn't say. She never said anything that passionately was in favor of young people at all, not once. And if you're going to care about the young people of Greenfield, you have to care about the teachers who are with them, and you have to care about their education. I bet you every single person that's in this room, including the people that are virtual, all care about kids, and they all care about their education. But I did not hear from the mayor that she cares. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Julie Erickson.
You have to forgive me, it's way past my teacher bedtime. Julie Erickson-Waitley, I am a special education teacher at Greenfield Middle School. I'm here tonight in solidarity with many of my colleagues you've already heard from, from the Greenfield Education Association, to highlight the contract negotiations that are currently underway, and to ask that you, and as I'm learning, the mayor, do what you can to appropriate the funds that the school district, so that the school district and the union are able to negotiate a fair contract. And I do want to appreciate the advocacy that I've heard tonight from several of you, and I'm hearing that and really appreciating that, and trying to understand what's really necessary to get what we need. As we all know, the cost of living has gone up dramatically over the last few years. Over the same time period, teaching has become a more and more challenging job. The needs of students are greater than ever, and we, as teachers, are asking for nothing more than a reasonable cost of living adjustment. In particular, I feel like this has just been touched on a little. I want to highlight the Unit C contract for instructional assistance, or IAs, which I'm pretty sure was not included in the figures that Chair Parity mentioned earlier. So there's more money needed beyond that, because that was just for the teachers. I know a lot about this as a special educator. IAs have extremely difficult jobs, often working with the most behaviorally challenging students in our schools. And yet, the starting wage for IAs is $15.75 an hour per their currently but expired, current but expired contract. As one very valuable IA who I worked with this year put it to me, I could make more flipping burgers at Wendy's. And this was from an individual who cares deeply about the students, is committed to the work, wants to stay in his job. In just the first few months, he made really valuable connections with the students, and we're worried about losing him because he's not making enough to be able to pay his bills. This is only my fourth year at GMS, and I believe there's only, I'm pretty sure I checked with my colleagues, there's only one IA remaining in our building who was there when I started. Many IA positions have turned over repeatedly, and as we see in weekly emails from the superintendent, many IA positions remain vacant. This lack of stability in support staff is challenging for us teachers, and especially for the students who need consistency and structure more than anything. It is abundantly clear to me that a new contract with a reasonable cost of living adjustment is a huge piece of what is needed to attract and retain valuable instructional assistants. And the same, of course, is true for us teachers. So I urge you, I urge the mayor, the school committee, to closely examine the budget in search of a creative way to make the funds, more funds available, so that the district can negotiate in good faith. It's not just what the teachers of Greenfield deserve, but what the children and families of Greenfield deserve as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. That is it for public comment. So I'm going to move into public hearings and second readings. I see a dollar sign. So, Councilor Forgé, that's going to be you.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing in accordance with Homeworld Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at John Sun Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and Zoom, address listed below, to receive public input on the following: repurpose $3,585,000 from anaerobic digester authorization to a sludge dewatering project; and approve Baker's Office Supply invoice payment of $113.80 from fiscal year 23 Assessor's Department budget. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at John Sun Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and the Zoom Remote, address listed. Materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Sheila Gilmore, City Council President.
Okay, so we're opening that public hearing. Is there anybody who is here to speak on that particular, or either of those topics during the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
City Council Second Reading, October 19th, 2022. Repurpose $3,585,000 from anaerobic digester authorization to a sludge dewatering project; and approve Baker's Office Supply invoice payment of $113.80 from FY23 Assessor's Departmental Budget.
Thank you. Next. So, in motions, orders, and resolutions, now we've got, okay, this one is you, Vice President Gwen, for the subsequent of the ad hoc committee.
The first six are mine. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the formation of the Greenfield Charter, Chapters 7-7 and 7-8 Review Committee, an ad hoc committee of the Appointments and Ordnance Committee for the purpose of reviewing and providing recommendations, if any, of the City of Greenfield's Charter, Chapter 7-7 Citizens Initiative Measure and 7-8 Citizens Referendum Procedures. The seven-member committee will consist of the following appointments, with terms to expire once a final report is submitted to the Appointments and Ordnance Committee: two members of the city council, Catherine Golub and Derek Healy; two members assigned by the mayor, Danielle Leturno and Ashley Stempel-Rey; two members of the public, Isaac Mass and Albert Norman; and the committee chair and moderator, David Singer.
Do we have a second?
Second, Ricketts.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
Let me just say that this has a positive unanimous recommendation from A&amp;O. I have lots of information if anyone needs it. This is a committee that is formed as an ad hoc committee to A&amp;O, which means they have no authority, they are getting a consensus on a popular item, which will then come back to A&amp;O, and those recommendations that they made, A&amp;O will then review their recommendations. And if A&amp;O agrees with the recommendations or disagrees with the recommendations, they will then make recommendations to this body that gets to vote. And not until that time is it anything more than a review and a conversation to move things along in a good way. And that's what this is about.
Perfect. Yes, Councilor Ricketts?
Okay, yes. So I will be voting yes on this, even though I'm totally against it, and I don't like it at all. But I know that it gets to come back to the council table, and so, like the ideas that Gary Seldon have today, I hope that works its way in with this group that meets together. So I'm going to say yes, knowing that it's coming back here.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have Councilor Lapinski.
Yeah, my, my first question is, why do we have to vote on this? Could not the Appointments and Ordnance Committee simply designate these people to do some work for them? Does anybody know the answer to that?
We have to vote for appointments, just like anything from A&amp;O, when the mayor makes appointments, we don't even really get to control that, but we still have to vote for them here. Yes.
And my second question is, how was the membership decided?
All right. I'm going to cut off this line of questioning, because we did discuss this at A&amp;O, which you have been assigned to, and you have chosen not to go.
That's actually not accurate.
And you also asked this question last month, and I said the same thing. If you're not going to go to your subcommittee meetings, we're not doing your homework for you. Does anybody else have any questions about this? Okay. In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries.
The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider-Gartner, an ordinance amending the code of the city of Greenfield, moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield, Chapter 394 Tag Sales, as written in the strike-through attached hereto. 394-3, delete permit, replace with registration. 394-3, delete until a permit for the same has been issued by, replace with until registered with. Delete Board of License Commissioners, replace with the city of Greenfield. Delete Board of License Commissioners or its tag signee, replace with the city of Greenfield. Delete permit, replace with registration. Delete permit E., replace with registrant. Delete apply for permit, replace with register its tag sale. Add via email and add there is no fee for this permit. 394, delete person, replace with household, add or three consecutive days if is a recognized holiday weekend. 394-6, delete permit, replace with registration. 394-8, delete with him, replace with chief of police. And further amend the code of Chapter 394 with the following global changes: change town to city. And further amend the index of the code, and further that no substantive changes to the numbering of this ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Ricketts? And then you wanted to take care of the permit, right?
Correct.
Do we want to do that now before we go into?
I, I think so. I'd like to amend the wording for, I'll make a motion to amend 394-3. That last line that says, "There is no fee for this permit," it should say, "There is no fee for this application," because we're calling, we're changing the word "application" permit to "application" everywhere else, and then we come back and say "permit." So, do I have a second on that?
Buck it.
Sorry. So that's, that's the reasoning. If we're getting rid of the word "permit," we're, we're voting to put "permit" back in. Is that correct, Kathy? Yes.
Okay, we have to vote on the amendment before we can vote to accept the changes. Yes, there were, there were lots of seconds. All right. All in favor of taking the word "permit" out and adding the word "application"?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, great. Now we're voting on whether or not we're going to make the amendment to our code.
And let me just give the update, and this goes on for all of these next changes. These are all, were all positively unanimously recommended by A&amp;O. They are maintenance changes to get us back in compliance with what we're actually doing as a municipality. Some of these changes were made over the years. This is what we are currently doing, so we have to have the code match what we're actually doing. And some has to do with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and changes they made to their laws, and that's what these are. They're mostly maintenance, bringing us into compliance.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries. And then the next one?
The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider-Gartner, sorry, an order amending the code of the city of Greenfield, moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield, Chapter 209, alcoholic beverages, as written in the strike-through attached hereto. 209-6, removal of patrons, remove persons, replace with patrons. Remove except the bartender and/or other person or persons duly employed by the business solely for the purpose of cleaning and closing the business. Replace with any liquor license or their manager shall not be prohibited from being on the licensed premises at any time provided further that the employees, contractors, or subcontractors shall not be prohibited from being upon such premises at any time for the purpose of cleaning, making renovations, making emergency repairs to or providing security for such premises, or preparing food for the day's business, or opening or closing the business in any orderly manner. 209-10, delete three, replace with six. Delete the entire text, replace with the Board of License Commissioners may, after hearing of reasonable opportunity, therefore, cancel any license issued for the sale of or service of alcoholic beverages issued under MGL-C138 if the license ceases to conduct the licensed business for a period of six months or more. And further amend the code, Chapter 209, with the following global changes: change town to city. And further amend the index of the code, and further that no substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Do we have a second?
Second, Ricketts?
Thank you. I know you gave the report as far as the unanimous positives. Did you want to explain, or do you want to keep the same?
No.
If there's, if there's no questions on the specifics of this, this was to come into compliance to allow people to be in their business after the hours or during the hours to clean, cook, do the things that businesses need to do, because it has appeared in the past it would have prohibited them from being in there in compliance with their license. Another question was asked why we changed it from, I believe, three months to six months, and the reason was six months was just not, three months was just not long enough. They needed the extra time to be able to get it done. There was no other reasoning.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Next one, we're on four now.
Just keep me in line. All right. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider-Gartner, an order amending the code of the city of Greenfield, moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield, Chapter 337 Peddling and Soliciting, as written in the strike-through attached here too. 337-1, definitions, delete C in its entirety. 337-3, applications for certificate, Section C, delete a felony and replace with a sexual crime where they must register as a sex offender, a violent felony, or a felony involving financial crimes such as embezzlement, fraud, identity theft, or similar. Section E, insert, review the background of the applicant using Section C as a guide. If the police department approves the application, they shall then forward the application to the Board of License Commissioners for their review and approval. The police department shall... 337-4, revocation of certificate. Expiration date, A, delete Board of License Commissioners, replace with Police Department in two instances. 337-8, fees. Add Police Department in two instances, and delete except the Board of License Commissioners shall... shall waive said fee for the charitable, religious, social, political action or nonprofit group, including but not limited to veterans groups, hospitals, the United Way, YMCA, and the American Red Cross. And delete unless such fee is waived by the Board of License Commissioners as provided above. 337-10, badge permits to be displaced. Delete the actual cost of such badge size permit shall be in addition to the cost of the license fee. And further amend the code, Chapter 337, with the following global changes. Change town to city, change town of Greenfield to city of Greenfield. And further amend the index of the code and further that no substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Second, Ricketts?
Thank you. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes. Number five.
The City Council moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield, Chapter 408, vehicles and traffic, as attached here too. And further amends the table of contents and index of the contents of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Second, Ricketts?
Any questions? Oh, go ahead.
I'm looking at this strike through version. And this is not what we voted on in the last meeting of A&amp;O. We eliminated the names of all the parking lots in 408-5. And we spent a lot of time on that. So, I'm not sure how we want to proceed. Do we want to amend it as we amended it, or do we want to send it back?
Or without objection, we can just put it on next month's agenda.
Fine.
Because I don't remember exactly how we worded that amendment.
We spent some time, and it was very lengthy. Basically because, and I'll just give you a quick what we're doing. Because the lots can be fluctuating, this is, you know, it's, we have fire station lot, we have library lot. There are no such thing anymore because those have changed. So, we said that there'll be signs posted explaining which lots are under permit and not specifically naming them. And we had wording to change that. You'll see it next month.
All right. Now, a slightly different flavor, but still A&amp;O.
Yes. I'm making sure I didn't jump ahead.
Fifty-four.
Yes. The City Council moves that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Crossroads Cultural District Committee, Charlotte Triber, term to expire upon project completion. Planning Board Alternate, Charles Kinney, term to expire December 31, 2025.
Second, Ricketts?
These also received a positive unanimous recommendation from A&amp;O, and there were no requests for any changes or clarification.
Great. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes? And...
Dan out.
Yes, now, we're on to Councilor Forgji.
Okay, thank you. Order number fiscal year 23-029 to the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner in accordance with master general law, an order to repurpose $3,585,000 anaerobic digester authorization. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves repurposing in the amount of $3,585,000 of a previously authorized anaerobic digester to a sludge de-watering project. Majority vote required. And the description at the bottom, for anybody who wants any information will help inform you.
Second, Ricketts?
This was a positive recommendation coming out of Ways and Means.
Was it unanimous, or was it split?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Are there any questions? Or discussion? All right, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries.
Okay, we had this big report here, so I just want to make sure. Big report with the hand in it.
Oh, yeah, now you're going to scroll.
Sorry.
It's okay. While you're scrolling, I'll say that it says it's supposed to be considered at 6:30 at the John's on. I think that is very optimistic. Yes.
All right, order number fiscal year 23-030. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, in order to approve payment of a prior year invoice, should be invoice, in the amount of $113.80. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of prior year invoices for Baker's Office Supply in the amount of $113.80 to be paid from fiscal year assessors 23 budget. Nine tenths vote required.
Second, Ricketts?
Okay, this also came out of Ways and Means with a positive unanimous decision, recommendation.
Thank you.
There are two items. I stand corrected, so it should be invoices. Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, any questions or comments? All right. Yes, so this is going to require 12 positive votes.
Oh.
So, since that's, since we have to count them, we should probably do a roll call.
Oh, no.
Just make sure we do our math right.
No.
You know what, take it back. Let's see if we get any no's. Then we'll do a roll call.
Come on.
No, we should do a roll call because if people just don't say anything, then it won't count.
Yes.
All right, roll call it is.
It's requested. Undebatable.
$113.
Councilor Gullub?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
Oh, yes.
Councilor Disorder?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Lapinski?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Elmer?
Yes.
Councilor Forgji?
Yes.
Councilor Ricketts?
Yes.
Councilor Toronto?
Absolutely.
President Gilmore, do you want to vote?
Yes, yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, it's unanimous. Next is the acceptance of the city quarterly's grant listing. I know I had to leave Ways and Means pretty early last night. Was this on for last night?
Yes, this was discussed last night, and it has come out of committee with recommendation.
Okay, great.
Okay. Fiscal year 23-054. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner, that it be ordered that, ordered that, an order to accept the city's quarterly grant list, including current and pending grants to the city of Greenfield, majority vote required.
Second, Toronto.
It was a unanimous positive recommendation, however, I have given it some thought since it came out. What I want to make sure, what I want to say about this is that I believe there was a request from some members of the council that we receive this report on an annual, I mean, on a quarterly basis. And so, Liz put this together, sent it out to us. There's a total of $37 million in grants that come into the city, which is, if you think about it, more than half of our total bottom line budget of over 50 million bucks. So, the question in my mind is, exactly what are we accepting? Are we accepting the report? Are we resec, uh, rese... I'm sorry. Are we accepting this report? Are we accepting the figures as being correct? Are we accepting that on a quarterly basis, this is going to put the onus on the mayor's office? There doesn't really seem to be a clarification as to what it is that we are actually accepting. So, if anybody's got a little clarification, or if there are other folks that want to join in here.
I saw Councilor Ricketts, then Councilor Disorder.
Okay.
Well, I remember when Ways and Means asked for it. They're the ones who wanted the list. They wanted the report. It wasn't to, I mean, you can do whatever you want with the figures and be able to ask Liz, or the mayor, or anyone about them. But what you voted, what you asked for was, could we have a list of all the grants that come into the city? And this is the list. Okay. Yeah, but I think the question is, when we're accepting this, what are we voting? Are we voting like, yes, these are the numbers, and these are accurate, and we certify these? Or are we saying, thank you, received?
We just got the list. I don't even know why it's up for a vote.
I don't, I didn't really understand exactly. I think there were other members of the committee last evening that didn't really understand why it made it to this level into Ways and Means. There's not, like, there's really...
Because you, yeah, because you asked for it. You didn't have to put it on the agenda.
I didn't. It was on our agenda.
Because she sent it in. It was our committee last year.
I make a motion to table.
All right, next I have...
Do we get more questions?
All right, do we have a second? No, we don't have a second, so I don't, I think people want to continue to discuss this. And I'm sorry, the parliamentarian made a suggestion. But Councilor Disorder, I've recognized you, and then I will let you know what the suggestion was, if it feels like it would be helpful.
I just wanted to say, I hate to contradict you, but I think last night it wasn't unanimous positive because two of us abstained because we didn't know what we were voting on.
I stand corrected, and that's fine because I have no memory, so thank you.
No, and I thought it was a long meeting. But I'm still, I'm still unclear why, I'm delighted that we got a list. And I was appreciative of that.
And I do too.
And thank you for whoever put it together. But I'm not clear what I'm voting on, so I don't want...
We have a voting on...
We've got the list.
Yes, we have a suggestion from the parliamentarian that we could make an amendment to this motion saying that we are acknowledging receipt, or that we are... I'm sorry, what was the other wording that you had? An appreciation.
Could we move to table this also, until we have more information?
Second.
You don't need any more information.
My question is, I just don't understand why we're voting for anything. If every time the mayor sent me something, or the mayor's office sent me something, and we had to vote for why we're voting for it, it's a report that we asked for, and we got it, and it's like, hey, thanks! And now we read it, and we look at, I don't know what we're, I don't even know the purpose of this vote. This has got me confused. That's...
I'm going to ask if a counselor would like to make an amendment to say that we are acknowledging receipts and expressing our gratitude.
I'll be happy to make the motion that we would think, you know, I, you know... I'd like to make a motion that you appreciate receiving a copy of the grants on a timely basis.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I was, I've got notes in front of me.
Do you think I'm going to remember what I just said?
I think what you said was, in order to acknowledge receipt and appreciation of the city's quarterly grant listing, including current and pending grants to the city of Greenfield. Is that what you said?
That's what I said.
All right, do I have a second?
Could I make, no, I wanted to make a friendly amendment.
Please.
That, and also that all future reports that come just come sent out to council.
One moment. Councilor Toronto, did you second that amendment?
No.
You didn't.
I seconded.
You seconded it.
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilor Ricketts.
Oops, yes?
Go ahead. You can make your friendly amendment now.
My friendly amendment was, and that all future quarterly reports just be sent to council, so they don't appear on agendas again.
Oh, is it?
Is that a different motion?
Do I have a sec? No, it's an amendment.
It's a friendly amendment to Dan.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilor Toronto.
I was just going to ask if this motion, original motion, hadn't gotten a second, it would just have died, right?
Yes.
So, can I withdraw my second to the original motion?
Well, we've made amendments. We have to vote on the amendments before we can... Okay.
Kiss the fire station goodbye.
All right, folks, I know we're getting tired, so after this, let's take a quick break. But Councilor Disorder has her hand up.
Just, it's a point of order. I thought before Councilor Gwynn's motion, just to be fair, didn't we have a motion to table with a second? Did I imagine?
I got a motion to table from Councilor Mayo. I didn't get a second.
Okay.
And then Councilor Bottomley asked if he could table, he didn't phrase it like a motion, but that someone else made in a moment, an amendment.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, I actually did second the motion to table.
But he didn't, he didn't make a motion, he asked a question.
But couldn't we just all withdraw our firsts and seconds, and then we wouldn't have to talk about it anymore?
Yes, we could. So, if you would withdraw your second from his amendment...
I withdraw.
I withdraw my friendly amendment.
Wait, oh, you made the amendment, that's right. And then he was going to withdraw his second.
And then I withdraw my second to Dan's amendment?
The motion is now withdrawn.
Oh, thank God.
I'm going to suggest that we all take a quick break and collect ourselves. And then we'll be back here in a few minutes.
Counselors, please take your seats. Councilor Gwynn? Calling, Councilor Gwynn?
All right, so do we have our remote folks back? I can see Councilor Bullock, Councilor Mayo, and Councilor Healy, are you there?
Yep.
Councilor Healy, are you with us?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, the mayor is going to address us very briefly about the quarterly grant listing.
Good evening again, counselors. It seems like that was so long ago that I said that. This motion really is to just verify, clarify, verify, ensure that in order to accept the city's quarterly grant list that you asked for, that's all it is. And you can be assured that the numbers are accurate because those are the numbers on the grant. But I'm happy to withdraw this motion if that's going to make it easier. It was simply, the meaning of it was to simply have you vote that, yes, you want to receive it, you want to receive it on a quarterly basis. So, if I, do I just say, I'm happy to withdraw this motion? I don't know that you guys need to second me.
I don't think there has to be a second, because there's no one else to second you.
Yeah, you're the mayor, so, yeah.
Is everybody happy?
Yes.
I'll consider that a second.
Yeah, and then in the future, if we could just get the report as, you know, an email that comes out, you know, at a time that's... Yeah, quarterly email that comes out at a convenient time, that would be appreciated.
Sure, and as always, if you have questions about it?
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to the zoning amendment for 41 Oak Hill Road.
That's mine, yeah. Order number FY23-042. The City Council moves that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning map for 41 Oak Hill Road, portion of 75 Oak Hill Road, and parcel R20-10T from general industry GI to rural residential RC map attached. And further amends the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield, two-thirds vote required.
Second Ricketts.
Okay, this came out of.
Second Ricketts.
Yeah, thank you. Report from committees, this came out with a unanimous positive recommendation from both the EDC and the planning board. I can explain what it is if you want briefly.
Just briefly for the record.
Yeah, this is a woman who inherited her father's business, which is a specialty lumber business. She wants, she's got this big piece of property, she wants to make it a residential community for over 55 people and it seemed like a really good idea, so we were all, we're all for it.
Great. Are there any questions or comments? No, that's cool. Yes.
Where in Greenfield is Oak Hill Road?
It's up in the north.
Off Barton Road.
Barton, okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Great. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, this passes. Wonderful. All right, so at the end of the agenda, we have a bunch of tabled motions. So if we want to leave them on the table, just don't second the motion. Oh, my goodness, I went right over the warrant.
I know, I saw that, I was like, did Kathy say not tonight? What?
The entire warrant needs to be read. Who reads really fast?
Oh, Mike wanted to do it.
I can do it.
Mike wanted to do it.
Fine.
Is that true?
Thanks, Penny, I'm not going to forget that. Order number fiscal year 23-065. City council moved that it be ordered, oops, the Greenfield city council hereby approves the attached state general election warrant for November 8, 2022. Further authorize the city council president to sign said warrant on behalf of the city council. All right, I got to read all this, huh?
Everything, every word.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, warrant for 2022 state election, November 8, 2022. I'm on the right part, right, yeah. Franklin, SS Franklin to either of the constables of the town of Greenfield. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth, you hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in primaries, devoted Greenfield High School Gymnasium, Bar Avenue Precincts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 on Tuesday, the 8th day of November 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose: cast their votes in the state election for the candidates for the following offices: governor and lieutenant governor for this Commonwealth, attorney general for this Commonwealth, secretary of state for this Commonwealth, treasurer for this Commonwealth, auditor for this Commonwealth, representative in Congress, 2nd district, councillor, 8th district, senator and general court, Hampshire, Franklin and Worcester District, representative in general court, 1st and 2nd Franklin District, district attorney, Northwestern District, sheriff, Franklin County, council of government executive committee, Franklin County. Question one, proposed amendment to the constitution. Do you approve of the adoption of an amendment to the constitution summarized below, which was approved by the general court in joint sessions of the two houses on June 12, 2019? Yays, 147, nays, 48, and again on June 9, 2021, yea, 159, nays, 41. Summary, this proposed constitutional amendment would establish an additional 4% state income tax on that portion of annual taxable income in excess of $1 million. This income level would be adjusted annually by the same method used for federal income tax brackets to reflect increases in the cost of living. Revenues from this tax would be used, subject to appropriation by the state legislature, for public education, public colleges and universities, and for the repair and maintenance of roads, bridges and public transportation. The proposed amendment would apply to tax years beginning on or after January 1, 2023. A yes vote would amend the state constitution to impose an additional 4% tax on that portion of incomes over $1 million to be used, subject to appropriation by the state legislature on education and transportation. A no vote would make no change in the state constitution relative to income tax. Question two, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the senate or the House of Representatives on or before May 3, 2022? Summary, the proposed law would direct the commissioner of the Massachusetts Division of Insurance to approve or disapprove the rates of dental benefit plans that would require that a dental insurance carrier mean annual aggregate medical loss ratio for its covered dental benefit plans of 83%. Medical loss ratio would measure the amount of premium dollars a dental insurance carrier spends on its members' dental expenses and quality improvements, as opposed to administrative expenses. If a carrier's annual aggregate medical loss ratio is less than 83%, the carrier would be required to refund the excess premiums to its covered individuals and groups. The proposed law would allow the commissioner to waive or adjust the refunds only if it is determined that issuing refunds would result in financial impairment for the carrier. The proposed law would apply to dental benefit plans regardless of whether they are issued directly by a carrier through the connector or through an intermediary. The proposed law would not apply to dental benefit plans issued, delivered or renewed to a self-insured group or where the carrier is acting as a third-party administrator. The proposed law would require the carriers offering dental benefit plans to submit information about their current and projected medical loss ratio, administrative expenses and other financial information to the commissioner. Each carrier would be required to submit an annual comprehensive financial statement to the, to the division of insurance itemized by market group size and line of business. A carrier that also provides administrative services to one or more self-insured groups would also be required to file an appendix to their annual financial statement with information about its self-insured business. The proposed law would impose a late penalty on a carrier that does not file its annual report on or before April 1. The division would be required to make the submitted data public to issue an annual summary to certain legislative committees and to exchange the data with the Health Policy Commission. The commissioner would be required to adopt standards requiring the registration of persons or entities not otherwise licensed or registered by the commissioner and criteria for the standardized reporting and uniform allocation methodologies among carriers. The proposed law would allow the commissioner to approve dental benefit policies for the purpose of being offered to individuals or groups. The commissioner would be required to adopt regulations to determine eligibility criteria. The proposed law would require criteria, carriers to file group product base rates and any changes to group rating factors that are to be effective on January 1 of each year on or before July 1 of the preceding year. The commissioner would be required to disapprove any proposed changes to base rates that are excessive, inadequate or unreasonable in relation to the benefits charged. The commissioner would also be required to disapprove any change to group rating factors that is discriminatory or not actuarially sound. The proposed law sets forth criteria that, if met, would require the commissioner to presumptively disapprove a carrier's rate, including if the aggregate medical loss ratio for all dental benefit plans offered by a carrier is less than 83%. The proposed law would establish procedures to be followed if a proposed rate is presumptively disapproved or if the commissioner disapproves a rate. The proposed law would require the division to hold a hearing if a carrier reports a risk-based capital ratio on a combined entity basis that exceeds 700% in its annual report. The proposed law would require the commissioner to promulgate regulations consistent with its provisions by October 1, 2023. The proposed law would apply to all dental benefit plans issued, made effective, delivered or renewed on or after January 1, 2024. A yes vote would regulate dental insurance rates, including by requiring companies to spend at least 83% of premiums on member dental expenses and quality improvements instead of administrative expenses and by making other changes to dental insurance regulations. A no vote would make no change in the law relative to the regulations that apply to dental insurance companies. Question three, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the senator of the House of Representatives on or before May 3, 2022? Summary, this proposed law would increase the statewide limits on the combined number of licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption, including licenses for all alcoholic beverages and for wines and malt beverages that any one retailer could own or control, from 9 to 12 licenses in 2023 to 15 licenses in 2027 and to 18 licenses in 2031. Beginning in 2023, the proposed law would set a maximum number of all alcoholic beverages licenses, licenses that any one retailer could own or control at seven licenses unless a retailer currently holds more than seven such licenses. The proposed law would require retailers to conduct the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption through face-to-face transaction and would prohibit automated or self-checkout sales of alcoholic beverages by such retailers. The proposed law would alter the calculation of the fine that the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission may accept in lieu of suspending any license issued under the State Liquor Control Act. The proposed law would modify the formula for calculating such fee from being based on the gross profits in the sale of the alcoholic beverages to being based on the gross profits on all retail sales. The proposed law would also add out-of-state motor vehicle licenses to the list of forms of identification that any holder of a license issued under the State Liquor Control Act or their agent or employee may choose to reasonably rely on for proof of a person's identity and age. A yes vote would increase the number of licenses a retailer could have for the sale of alcoholic beverages to be consumed off premises, limit the number of all alcoholic beverages licenses that a retailer could acquire, restrict use of self-checkout and require retailers to accept customers' out-of-state identification. A no vote would make no change in the laws governing the retail sale of alcoholic beverages. Question four, referendum on an existing law. Do you approve of a law summarized below, which was approved by the House of Representatives and the senate on May 26, 2022? Summary, this law allows Massachusetts residents who cannot provide proof of lawful presence in the United States to obtain a standard driver's license or learner's permit if they meet all the other qualifications for a standard license or learner's permit, including a road test and insurance, and provide proof of their identity, date of birth and residency. The law provides that when processing an application for such a license or learner's permit or motor vehicle registration, registrar of motor vehicles may not ask about or create a record of the citizenship or immigration status of the applicant, except as otherwise required by law. This law does not allow people who cannot provide proof of lawful presence in the United States to obtain a real ID. To prove identity and date of birth, the law requires an applicant to present at least two documents, one from each of the following categories. One, a valid unexpired foreign passport or a valid unexpired consular identification document, and two, a valid unexpired driver's license for many United States or territory, an original or certified copy of a birth certificate, a valid unexpired foreign national identification card, a valid unexpired foreign driver's license or marriage certificate or divorce decree issued by any state or territory of the United States. One of the documents presented by an applicant must include a photograph and one must include a date of birth. Any documents not in English must be accompanied by a certified translation. The registrar may review any documents issued by another country to determine whether they may be used as proof of identity or date of birth. The law requires that applicants for a driver's license or learner's permit shall attest under the penalties, or pains and penalties of perjury that their license has not been suspended or revoked in any other state, country or jurisdiction. The law specifies that information provided by or relating to any applicant or license holder will not be a public record and shall not be disclosed, except as required by federal law or as authorized by Attorney General regulations and except for purposes of motor vehicle insurance. The law directs the registrar of motor vehicles to make regulations regarding the documents required of United States citizens and others who provide proof of lawful presence with their license application. The law also requires the registrar and the secretary of the Commonwealth to establish procedures and regulations to ensure that an applicant for a standard driver's license or learner's permit who does not provide proof of lawful presence will not be automatically registered to vote. The law takes effect on July 1, 2023. A yes vote would keep in place the law, which would allow Massachusetts residents who cannot provide proof of lawful presence in the United States to obtain a driver's license or permit if they meet the other requirements for doing so. A no vote would repeal this law. Public policy question, non-binding question, 1st Franklin District. Question five, this question is not binding. Shall the representative from this district be instructed to introduce and vote for legislation that puts a fee on the carbon content of fossil fuels to compensate for their environmental damage and returns most of the proceeds inequitable ways to individuals as a cash-back dividend? Yes or no? Public policy question, non-binding question, 2nd Franklin District. Question five, this question is not binding. Shall the representative for this district be instructed to vote for legislation to create a single payer system of universal health care that provides all Massachusetts residents with comprehensive health care coverage, including the freedom to choose doctors and other health care professionals, facilities and services, and eliminates the role of insurance companies and health care by creating an insurance trust fund that is publicly administered? Yes, no? Question six, this is not binding. Shall the representative for this district be instructed to vote in favor of changes to the applicable House of Representative rules to make each legislator's vote in that body's legislative committees publicly available on the legislature's website? Yes or no? Hereof fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands this 19th day of October, 2022. City Council President Sheila Gilmore is authorized by vote of the Greenfield City Council by constable posting, constable data posting. Warrant must be posted by November 1, 2022, at least seven days prior to the November 8, 2022 state election.
Sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
Yeah.
All right, do I have a second?
You said, read all of it.
I'll second that.
I didn't read the page number.
Right, I've got a second.
I'll read if you want.
All right, so I have signed the warrant. Hold on, we need a vote so I can sign the warrant. All in favor of accepting the warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, great. That part's done.
May I ask a procedural question about the next section?
Um, yeah, I was going to go over that, so let's see. Yeah.
Basically, I haven't been around for that many tabled motions. Why are they at the end?
Oh, so we put them at the end during committee chairs just because I was trying to group things by sort of theme.
I, I guess what's going through my head is if tabled motions go to the end, they're more likely to get tabled again and it ends up being kind of kicking the can down the road.
I wouldn't say that that's necessarily true in my experience. But I will say though, is there's always confusion with these and I thought that's what you were going to get, touch on. So I do want to let people know that when these come up, the first time that we vote on it, we're voting to take it from the table. So it's not whether or not you're voting yes or no on such and such motion, it's yes, we're taking it from the table or no, not at the moment. And every tabled motion has to have a se- uh, well, it has to, someone has to move it and then it has to be seconded.
I have a question. Can you repeat what you said about if it doesn't get a second, what happens?
If it doesn't get a second, then we can't consider it.
Does it stay on the table?
It just stays, yeah, it would just stay on the table sort of indefinitely until someone makes a motion and gets a second.
And that's also true if it doesn't get a majority, correct?
Correct. For, for coming off the table, yes, that's correct. But once we vote on it, if it doesn't get a majority, it can't come back for, is it nine months?
A child, yeah, nine months.
Yeah, in the same form.
Right, but we have to get a majority to take it from the table in order to not put it on next month's agenda, essentially, right?
Well, no, I mean, it doesn't have to be written onto the agenda. I mean, there are like probably thousands of tabled motions that happened before I was even on city council, that I don't even know about. Sometimes things get tabled and they just die.
Might not get a second, so it might not even be a.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't think that we would print it on the agenda unless there was, like, unless we had some thought that maybe it would come up, you know? If there was something that was tabled six years ago, it was a budgetary issue that isn't relevant now, we're not going to just list, we're not going to continue to list them. What was that?
Should we get rid of buggies and cars and allow cars?
Whatever it was, it seems like it was really funny, but.
It's the year my grandfather was born.
All right.
I'm kind of ready, yeah.
So item number seven was to appropriate $100,000 from general stabilization. Is there anyone who wants to make that motion? Make the motion to take that from the table, I'm sorry.
So moved?
Okay, so you would have to read the motion.
I'm looking for the page.
96.
I guess I.
I mean, not 96, 103.
I was on 96.
103, sorry.
Am I reading the top or the bottom?
All of it.
The top, first half of the page.
Move to take it from the table, the Greenfield City Council, it says that. I'll try again. Move that the Greenfield City Council take from the table, order number FY 22155, $100,000 be appropriated from Fund 8400, general stabilization for an independent assessment slash audit of the city of Greenfield's police department. Structure, policies and practices areas to be covered include, but are not limited, should say, to the following organizational structure and governance, operating policies and procedures, department culture, hiring and promotional practices, professional standards and accountability, budgeting and planning. This was tabled last month.
Yeah, you have to, you have to read it the way it's written.
At the September 21, 2022 city council meeting, majority vote required.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, now we're voting whether or not we're going to take it from the table. We're not voting whether or not we want to actually pass it, so.
Is it debatable?
To take from the table? No, I was just explaining what we're doing. All right, so all those in favor of taking it from the table?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?[1720.85] Abstentions? Okay, this most-
I'm opposed, I'm sorry, I'm opposed for taking it from the table.
Okay.
I am as well, Consular Healy.
Okay, so we have two opposed, but it is off the table. All right. So at this point, do we have to reread the motion? No, it's open for discussion. All right, the, the motion is on the floor. Okay. Who wants to start? Because I know someone's gonna s-
I'll do it.
Yes, Council Forgy.
So it's fiscal year 22-155. The city council moved that-
Oh, no, no, you don't have to read it again.
No, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's just who has questions or comments, who wants to start the-
Oh, I have no questions or comments, thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody who has anything they would like to add? Vice President Gwynn?
I'm just gonna say that, um, although I thought an audit was appropriate, and if it was my choice, I would try to get clarification from a third party majority, but it's apparent that the public and, and most of us are just kind of over this at the moment. And I feel that we just, uh, I'm gonna vote no, and, um, look at it again when it comes back, because I'd rather put $100,000 towards something that we've got to worry about immediately, and, and that's where I'm gonna be.
Council Ricketts.
Okay, so for the audit, I wanna vote yes, because I've been involved long enough to know that things change. Counselors change, selectmen change, mayors change, and with the budget cut, our police departments changing also. The only reason I won't vote for this probably tonight is the price tag, but I'm for an audit, because it doesn't mean somebody down the road, a year or two years from now, won't find that beneficial, and it may be all different people at the table. So it's just the price tag, and I don't know if that's reasonable or not. And I think what I learned last month or the month before, by maybe, um, Consular Forgy or Consular Bullock, is that in other cities, they saw it for like $60,000. So that's where I stand.
Thank you, Council Lapienski was next.
So I appreciate all the members of the public that, uh, spoke in opposition to this, and I more or less agree with their assessment that this isn't going to achieve real results. Um, but I do agree with you, Council Ricketts, that it would be nice if we could have some kind of a process that would get them. I just don't think that this particular thing is the way to go, so I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, next I have Council Healy.
Yeah, I just had a quick question in regards to this. So if this, if this motion came back down the road, saying another two months for a different dollar value, I think we talked about this before, it could come back for vote, because it's a different financial order, correct, for a motion, right? So you wouldn't have to wait the nine months.
For a different dollar amount, would that be considered?
That's significant.
Okay, no, that, you're right, it, that would be considered a substantial amount of change that it could come back.
So with that logic, I would say that I'm, I'm a no for this right now.
Okay, um, next I have Council Mayo.
Um, I'm a no for this, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, we heard several people from the public, um, speak on this issue regarding, um, you know, the ineffectiveness of, of this audit, and because the mayor basically has the authority to, to, uh, uh, take a look at this audit and, and make decisions based on the audit. Uh, the cost of the audit, uh, I think is a little high. Um, I, I would like to see it, uh, at half that number. Uh, I'm not sure if that's possible, but, uh, $100,000 for an audit seems, uh, seems very high. Uh, but I'm a no on this, uh, uh, question right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, so it seems like people are ready to vote on this, is that correct?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to add one more.
Yes, please.
So I do appreciate, um, the members of the public who came out tonight to voice their opinion. And so I'm a counselor at large, so the one thing I do have to remember is that 25 people, maybe, who spoke, I, I still have to think about 18,000 people are in the city, not the 30 that spoke tonight. So again, I'll probably vote no because of the price tag, but I'm all for the audit, and I'm for all the people we are not hearing from. We learned, I thought we learned our lesson about that before. Thank you.
All right.
And roll call, please.
Okay.
Counselor- Counselor Golub?
No.
Vice President Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Lapienski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgy?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
I'll vote no.
Okay, uh, motions defeated unanimously.
Okay, moving to the next one. So the next one that's listed is the, um, to rescind the borrowing authorization. If someone would like to make the motion to take that from the table, they can read the motion on 104.
I'll read it. I haven't done my share of reading yet, so, um, thank you, Mike, Counsel Toronto, for that. Uh, so, uh, this is that the city council take from the table, order number FY23027. Vote to rescind the following borrowing authorization by $500,000. Revised authorization, $19,041,296, which was tabled at the September 21, 2022 city council meeting, majority vote required.
Second.
Second.
Ricketts and Gwynn. Ricketts wins.
Yeah, so we can't discuss this because this is a vote to take it from the table? It's non-debatable. So all in favor of taking this from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so this motion is now on the table, and now, um, Counselor Mayo, I'm gonna recognize you first. Did you have a question?
Um, I do not. Uh, I, I think, I think the people, uh, spoke, uh, in favor of this, and, and, uh, I think it, that, they, they said enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask what Ways and Means vote was?
Yes, can we get a report from committee? Do you remember the, I don't know, or anybody?
I know as well, though. I mean, I watched, but just-
Unanimous positive, it was a unanimous, that was a unanimous positive.
I would say that, as I look at everybody around the table to make sure, okay, that it was a positive, unanimous positive recommendation.
I watched it, I'm just not on the committee, so I didn't wanna say it, but I wanted it part of the record.
Oh, yes.
I just wanna say, we're rescinding a borrowing, we're not doing anything, we're rescinding a borrowing because we don't need it, it's really a procedural piece.
Yeah, I thought Counselor Mayo was trying to ask a question, but it sounds like he wasn't trying to get my attention, so. All right, yes.
Um, so I, uh, was mistakenly under the impression that these next two orders are tied to one another because they're both for $500,000, but it, it doesn't seem like that's the case. It seems like, um, wha- this vote is just simply, the, we don't need the money for the library anymore, and so we can remove the authorization to borrow. Um, and I'm repeating this mainly so members of the public who don't understand it now do, and basically the money was never borrowed. And in order to allow us to potentially borrow for something else, we have to rescind the authorization to borrow money that we're never gonna borrow anyway.
That's partially correct. We would have to rescind it anyways, just to keep our financial records tidy?
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, so usually a vote to rescind borrowing is usually, um, unanimous and not contentious.
I'm all in favor.
The next one, you know, obviously we have to rescind before we could vote on the next one, but the next one is what they were speaking to us about.
Yes, that's, that's, that's right.
Just a point of clarification. I'm sorry, but when Counsel Lapienski just mentioned that we weren't gonna borrow it anyways, if the, we asked the library folks to get out and raise money and, and show that they were in favor of their project, and they went out and they did their due diligence, and they raised the money, and now that money is, been applied, so we don't have to borrow it. Had they not gone out and did their fundraising as they promised, then we, yes, we would've had to borrow it. So it was gonna be borrowed, except they were able to reimburse us before we needed to borrow it.
Great. Okay, are there any other questions on the, yes?
May I ask a question of Director Gilman, if she's still on the line?
Uh-
Hey, she am.
What's the, yeah, what's the question?
Well, I was told that, um, the amount of money raised by the fundraising campaign was substantially more than $500,000. I'm wondering why we're only rescinding the $500,000.
Because at the time, we only had $500,000, and, or financial orders were, after financial orders were due, we got another $500,000. So you'll see another one real soon.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on this? Yes, Counsel Disorder?
This is a question for Liz, and the next $500,000, that would just be rescinding a borrowing without probably another borrowing order. We don't need another borrowing order every time we do a rescinding of borrowing, do we? Director Gilman?
Hmm, they aren't related, as we've had the discussion, the two orders. Um, the second $500,000 is just gonna be a rescission. The second rescission. So for a total of $1 million rescission.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any questions, any comments? All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that borrowing has been rescinded. All right, if there's someone who wants to take the next one from the table, they can read the motion on page 105.
Somebody else take a turn.
City council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table, order number FY23-013, to amend the city council rules of procedure, rule eight, order in dis- I skipped over the wrong one, didn't I?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I think-
We're on 105.
Sorry about that. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table, order number FY23-028, an additional sum of $500,000 be appropriated for the construction of a new fire station, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $500,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept, and expend any federal and or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of this project. And further, in accordance with MGL, Chapter 44, Section 20, the premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes hereunder, less any such premium applied, to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, which was tabled at the September 21st, 2022 city council meeting, majority vote required.
Second.
All right, so I've got a motion and a second. Now, this is on the floor or not on the table?
Your mo- vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote to put it on the floor. Sorry. Non-debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, now it's on the floor, not on the table like I said last time.
How many votes does this one need? Two thirds, okay.
No, it says majority.
Majority vote. Oh, right.
Ah.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yes.
Okay, so it's, please forgive me, my bedtime is typically before now, and I'm still grappling with this one and trying to be articulate. I came here prepared to vote against this, and very well may. There is one word in this that, there's two things that might sway me. And one is the word "may" here about applying the bond premium. I think I would feel more comfortable voting for this if there was an assurance that the bond premium was definitely going to be applied to this. I just, I have a lot to learn about municipal finance, but per, my personal finances taught me not to borrow money for, just to have the money on hand, and, um, and that's where I'm leaning. But if this, if the, if there was an assurance that the bond premium was applied, I may consider it. And so I don't know if this would be the time to make a motion that that word be changed. Um, but I would like to see that be "will" as opposed to "may."
So I'm gonna ask Counselor Forgy if she would kinda weigh in on this, but my understanding is that this is just sort, this is just how these are worded. It's sort of a pro forma. Oh, could you put your mic on, please?
I'm sorry, the person who can best answer that is Liz, because she's the one that drafted the order.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, it was my Ways and Means term.
So the wording actually came from Bond Council, who reviews all our authorizations, and the purpose of it and, and on other borrowings for the fire station that we've had, is that it needs to go against the debt. So that is the purpose of that wording that came straight from Bond Council.
Thank you, all right.
And, and needs to be applied to the, the debt.
Okay, so I have Counsel Healy then-
I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with changing it, but that actually language came from Bond Council.
No, I think that's helpful, thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Can we change the word to "will"?
Shall.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it significantly changes the intent of it.
You'd have to make a motion, wouldn't you?
Yeah. Friendly amendment, yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna move to Counsel Healy, and then if you wanna consider making that motion, then I'll, I could recognize you later. And then after Healy, I had, um, Ricketts and Forgy.
Sure. I don't know if, I was just gonna, I have something to say, but I don't know if you guys wanna hear what, uh, vote was on this in Ways and Means, I don't think we've said that yet. Um, it was, it was a three to two, if I recall correctly, but, um, my argument in this was, I think we're much better off borrowing the money now, um, as money that was already borrowed. With the free cash coming in, you know, it, we need to build our capital stabilization, and we need to build our accounts, because, you know, we don't know what's coming up in the next couple of fiscal years, and I'm a true believer in saving money for hard times, right? And, and my gut tells me those hard times are coming, um, and not just, most of our taxes are generated through property tax and revenue, and my argument there being is, if we see another housing market crash, because it's been floating a high for now, you know, you might see assessed values come down and property taxes go down based on assessed value, right? So my worry there is if we don't prepare for it, and we don't take that free cash and put it where we need it, and we use it to spend on a fire station, we might regret it later and have buyer's remorse. So I think we're much better borrowing the money that was already borrowed, and I think in the long run, um, we'll be much better off. So I just want you to kinda think about the three to five year plan, not just the, the fire station project when we're talking about this.
Okay, I had, uh, Counsel Ricketts, then Counsel Forgy, and then Counsel Toronto, did you?
Okay, so I wanna start by saying I'm going to vote for this. But as a counselor at large, I mean, I wish that I could put it on a ballot, because I know that it would pass overwhelmingly. This city will lose their mind, and rightly so, if we do not do this. I would never do this to the fire station. This is public safety. We have people here, month after month after month, about public safety. The fire is public safety as well. You know what, we used to have a habit of letting the senior center just, you know, go into the ground. Same thing with the library and with our high school. We're turning the corner, we're taking care of our infrastructure. Why would we stop now? This is just too important, and I mean, when we learned out of the police budget, when people came in front of us, 40 people, maybe, and we voted that way, we heard five times back from the public how upset they were. They're counting on us, that's why they're not here tonight asking for us to vote for it. They don't think there's any way we wouldn't vote for this. We're this close. I do not want those people in the parking lot this long. So yes, I'm voting yes, I hope this is going to be unanimous, and I can't even go about what I think personally about borrowing, because I'm speaking for the constituents, I'm not speaking for myself. And if they're thinking about taking care of the fire station, or even their taxes going up a little bit, I really, in my heart, think that's what they would want, is the fire station, because I saw them vote for the library, and I saw them vote for the high school, and they knew that both of those were gonna increase their taxes. This is the fire station. This is so different than those other two buildings. So I don't, I don't even, oh, I hope this isn't going to be a long discussion, I just can't imagine it would be. Let's take care of them because they take care of us. And the price of things are not going down. And think about the math of what it's going to cost every day that they're there. So let's vote yes and move on from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I had Counselor Forgie, then Counselor Toronto, and then Counselor Lapinski.
Yes, I do want. I do want to say that I was one of the three that voted last evening in favor of the borrowing. But there are a couple of things I think we need to consider at this point. The first argument that I'll make about this is that I'm going, there are nuances in municipal finance. And what they're asking for right now is an authorization to borrow. They're not going to borrow the money tomorrow morning. The authorization, however, goes a long way toward being able to move forward with the FF and E pieces to the fire station so that they can, under the authorization, go to bid for things that they need at this particular point. The borrowing authorization sits out there. We may or may not ever get around to borrowing this depending on what bond premiums come back in from when the fire station goes for another major borrowing. So this may, this is actually, in my opinion, very important that the authorization go forward and that, as Counselor Golub said, that we change the language that says "shall" with that, that particular piece in mind. That "shall" is something that, in the law, you have to do, you have to honor that. "May," that's more a little loose. But the "shall" guarantees that the bond premium payments, whatever we receive, will go back. And, and we may not even have to borrow this money. Those bond premiums will just go back to pay for the authorization. So again, I want to say that. I also want to say tonight, because I know that if, if this does not pass council this evening, then we are going to delay moving forward on this possibility of the authorization moving forward as well. So if people are thinking about not voting in favor of this item, my question would be to ask them to think about a compromise piece to moving this forward. Thank you.
All right, then I had Counselor Toronto's next.
I'd also like to say that I was, I was one of three voting for this last night. I would definitely be voting for this tonight. This is, there's no change. There's no change to what was already voted upon by the voters overwhelmingly. It's just for a different place. And in all honesty, if both of those things were on the ballot, I think the fire station would have been even a bigger vote than the library was. It wasn't as contentious, even though the two somehow got looped together. But, so it's really not going to change anything that was going to be expected. And as, as Counselor Forgie was saying, the borrowing's not happening right now. And as is even written in this authorization, there could be a grant that comes up for the specific stuff in this, while we're waiting to spend the money, that could offset this, we wouldn't have to borrow it. But it's, it, it's, the tough part I know, and I think I said this last night in a different way, is trying to compare personal finance to municipal finance is, you can't do it, it doesn't make sense. But to try to bridge that gap for anyone with those kind of questions, I hear about like, oh, well, what's the interest rate going to be? Is it going to go up? Is it going to be, you know, what's this? So I'll give the example of oil prices. So oil companies used to, not so much anymore, maybe still a little, used to offer, you could prepay in advance and get a fixed rate if you had the money. So if you knew that you were going to spend $2,000 on oil now, or if you waited six months, the price is going to go up to $4,000, that's double. But if the interest rate is only going to be five, say you could borrow that money from a friend and they were like, you're going to give me, you know, 10% interest on that. Across that six months, 10% of 2,000 is only 200 bucks. So you're paying $2,200 to get $4,000 worth of oil if you had waited. So it, that's just a little bit of a bridge example if someone's trying to tie it into personal finance versus, versus municipal. It's not a perfect example, of course, but it just, nothing would have, nothing would have changed. If the, if the, it would be the same as if the library hadn't raised $500,000 for this. And let's say people for, supporting the fire station had raised $500,000 for this right now and were handing us the same money. It's, you know, it's, I just don't see why it's, I don't know, this is a no-brainer to me, so that's it.
Okay, so I had Counselor Lapinski, and then Counselor Elmer, and then, no, I'm sorry. I saw you were before Counselor Elmer. And then Counselor Golub, and I'm going to write this down now. And then Gwynn.
So I think I'm probably going to vote for this. I'll be honest, I'm not happy with the way it's being presented. And here's what I mean by that. Basically, the mayor knows that the councils between a rock and a hard place. We don't get to decide where things come from, we just vote up or down. So she says, okay, you want to fund the fire station, here's how you do it. And we don't get a say in the matter. I think there are better ways to fund it. I think we've got, like the teachers were saying, we've got plenty of money, it's how we choose to spend it. And I've had this conversation at length with Liz Gilman, and I understand her position, and I don't always agree with it. In this case, I can't see how not funding the fire station is going to get us anywhere. But if we keep borrowing like this, we're going to be in a huge hole. And like Counselor Healy said, we have to actually prepare for a future in which we can't borrow indefinitely. So unless something major comes up in this discussion, I am going to vote for this. But I'm, I've had just about enough of the mayor telling us we have to borrow, we have to borrow, we have to borrow. And I really hope that our next finance director doesn't tell the mayor to keep saying that.
Thank you. So I had Counselor Disorder, and then, I'm sorry, I lost track of the voting. It was Counselor Disorder, then Counselor Bullock, and then Elmer Golub-Gwynn.
So just to be clear, I totally support spending the money on the fire station. I agree with Counselor Ricketts. It would be a horrifying thing not to be putting the money towards the fire station. I actually re-watched the September 12th meeting this afternoon to make sure I got it all right. And it was this last $500,000, September 12th. These were some of the things that were said. As many of us, many of us expressed concern at that meeting about rising interest rates and further borrowing. And that night, we were told there were many options for the $500,000 and that using free cash was an option. The night of the meeting, the mayor stated she expected free cash to be $2 million or even close to $3 million would be certified. The next morning, September 13th, our free cash was certified and it was $4 million. Which was 33% higher than we've ever certified before and over a million higher than was anticipated. I anticipated that we'd have a new financial order, that it would just come out of free cash and we would vote for that. But we didn't get that order. I, we're going to borrow for it instead. I just want to be clear, borrowing isn't free. Borrowing costs money, and we have it. We're now able to fully replenish our stabilization account and even increase it to where, where, even increase it to beyond where we were. So we're going to put $2,500,000, that came out of Ways and Means last night. It's not on the table tonight, but we are going to put that money in there. I think there would have been something to say about collaboration and listening on this, listening, listening today about things that, where people wanted to put funding. I don't want to hold up the fire station at all. I want all of this to happen. And I'm going to listen to my fellow councils. I think that we could have been listened to too. And I think that, I think we could have just taken the money out of free cash. Yep.
Thank you. I have Counselor Bullock and Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, thank you. It is far too late for me to try to be elegant, and I'm trapped in a COVID cave. So I, I agree with Ginny in the absence of an alternative order and based on the Ways and Means conversations and the meeting last month. I assumed there was other options without seeing anything on the agenda when the agenda came out. I am going to vote for this. We need to authorize this in order for it to go to bid and start. I'm, was very aware when the library construction happened that the delay in that project of it going to ballot and us waiting all that time and then COVID hitting and then costs rising cause, is causing that project to cost us more money. And I am afraid that that is what will happen with the fire station if we're not able to start this project. I'm also aware with the fire station in my precinct, the current fire station in my precinct, that it is not adequate for the long term, for our firemen and women to be there for an extended period of time. So I, you know, in order to not delay this any further and not have us be the reason that this is delayed, I'm going to vote for this tonight.
Thank you. Next, I have Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, I'm a yes vote on this, I think we're overthinking it.
Thank you. Counselor Golub?
Like I said, it's late and I'm formulating my thoughts. I just want to be clear that the no vote on the borrowing is not a no vote on the fire station. And I get that this needs to happen now. And if there had, I was thinking if this would have been voted down, we would have gotten an order in free cash. The reason why I'm leaning now toward voting for this is because I have a hope that the money that would have been allocated from free cash can go to the teachers. I don't have confidence or trust that that's what will happen, but that's to you, Mayor. We can get complicated about all the buckets of money in this town. But we do have the power, you do have the power, to decide where that money goes. And I don't want to risk taking money that could have gone to the teachers. And I still feel confused about all of this. But that's why I'm leaning toward voting yes because I'm hoping that we will, we will have an order to use the money in, from free cash or whatever to support the teachers' contract. And so I'm going to make an amendment, a motion to make an amendment to change the word "may" to "shall."
Second.
Okay.
Can I call the question?
So next I have Counselor Gwynn, and now we're, I'm sorry, we had to, I'm sorry, we had to vote on that amendment.
Yeah, non-debatable.
Yes. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, sorry. Counselor Gwynn, you are next on the speaking list, so do you want to speak to the order amended?
No, I don't, I don't want to speak to the amendment, I want to speak to the total, so we're good now.
Okay.
I am going to agree with Counselor Elmer. I think in a lot of ways we're overthinking this. I will be a yes for a lot of reasons. You know, the fact that we are given a couple of things that worked in so much in our favor with almost a net zero to the borrowing, which doesn't usually happen. We're usually given a borrowing. And then we have to remember one thing. As we just rescinded the borrowing on the library, you know, we rescinded that, we could get the same thing for this borrowing. Just because we're authorizing this doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to be borrowed, as Counselor Forgie explained. There could be something. Did you have a question on?
No, go ahead and finish your thought, because I've got Counselor Mayo before him, so.
Okay. So, you know, with, with that being said, this borrowing, we're in the home stretch for this fire station. Years ago, we spent millions of dollars renovating a school. And then my council that I sat on of 27 members, we spent three hours talking about screen windows. And I said, in those days, we're stepping over dollars to pick up pennies. And I'm almost feeling that way right now. We're, we're in the home stretch. It's time to authorize a borrowing, get this $500,000 with the hope that the money can be replenished in multiple ways. But tonight, we can get this moving forward, they can order, we're talking about furniture. We're going to have a beautiful fire station. And if we don't get this moving, there's going to be nothing to put them. We're all concerned about the people in a parking lot, and we want to move that ahead. But we don't want them in a new building with no furniture either. So let's tackle that piece later on and get this borrowing so we can move forward and get those things ordered because they're not going to get cheaper. And as former Counselor Jarvis said tonight, availability is still a problem. Get these things ordered, get them in there. And if there's a way to rescind this later, I think we've seen that we're capable of doing it because we just did it with the library.
All right, next I had Counselor Mayo, and then Counselor Lapinski.
I'd like to speak in great favor of this amendment. It's high time that we, we put the, put the bottom line to the fire station and get it going and get, and have no questions about it. I do agree with Counselor Golub and, and, and I'm very grateful about the word "shall" rather than "may." It makes, it makes me feel like the, we can hold the mayor accountable a little bit more with the word "shall" rather than "may." And with a $4 million surplus, maybe we could use, be creative along with reevaluating the departments and equalizing them that we get some extra money to give to the teachers because they well deserve it. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Counselor Lapinski.
Yeah, so I just want to be really clear that this is not a net zero borrowing. We rescinded a different authorization. It happens to be for the same amount of money. We heard at least one public commenter who used to serve on this body say that we were robbing Peter to pay Paul, which is supposed to be a bad thing. But, but in this case, we're not doing that. In this case, Peter raised the money so that we don't have to pay him. And now we're saying we hope that Paul will do the same thing. But in this case, there hasn't been a promise to raise money privately for the fire station. I still think we should fund this, but these arguments are absurd and false, and we shouldn't buy them. We should tell it like it is, which is we are borrowing money because the mayor doesn't want to spend the money we already have on something we desperately need.
Do we have any other questions or comments, or do you folks feel like they're ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, folks.
That was just on the amendment, wasn't it?
No.
No, we did vote, we voted the amendment already.
Okay, yeah, that's right, and then we discussed.
Oh, I will make you read the warrant again.
No, we did. We voted the amendment.
Yeah, no, I remembered.
Okay, so next is about the rules and procedures. That's on page 107, if somebody is interested in taking that off the table. at this point.
I'll do it.
Wait a minute.
Oh, just, am I waiting a minute? Who said wait a minute? Is somebody's mic on? Okay, I'll read it. The Greenfield City Council take from the table, Order Number FY twenty-three oh one three, to amend the City Council Rules of Procedure five six five dash eight, Rule eight, Order and Disposition of Business, Section A, Agenda, Subsection one, to add ten minutes time for communications with the mayor and Superintendent of Schools and School Committee, which was tabled at the September twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Meeting, majority vote required.
Do we have a second? Second, I'll second that.
It was already seconded.
Okay. All right, folks, is this something that you want to take from the table? Yes or no? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I heard like four votes.
Do, do a roll call, please.
Who wants to take this from the table? You vote yes if you want to take it. If you don't want to take it from the table tonight, you would vote no.
Madam President, please do a roll call. We have a lot of people on Zoom.
She was getting ready to, yep.
Oh, okay. Counselor Gullub?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Lepansky?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer? Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts? Counselor Toranzo? Does the president wish to vote?
Um, no, it doesn't look like it's going to matter. All right. This motion is on the floor, so now we're going to debate it.
May we have the recommendation from committee again?
So we, we were looking for a way to have a ten-minute portion that excluded the questions from the council, as you saw that happen tonight, went a lot longer than ten minutes. I just have one question. I'm not sure that the word "with" is correct.
It's not.
Communications from the Superintendent of Schools and School Committee, ten minutes, five A, questions from the council for the Superintendent of School and School Committee. Not, I don't know why "from" became "with." I, I don't know where that came from. I still think it should be "from."
Move to change it to "from."
Because it's.
Is there a second?
Second, Gullub.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Counselor Ricketts, I saw your, your hand up.
Oh, I'm voting no to the whole thing, so you could amend away. I don't, I don't want any time limits, because there's weeks and there's, I mean, there's months, there's a lot going on, and this is the only time we get to hear it, and I don't want to wait for us to have to get a press release or go digging through my council email to find really important information. And this is when the public can hear everything as well. So I'm not for this time limit at all. So, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on this, because I think it's unenforceable. The mayor just goes on and there was a, a bell ringing, and she didn't stop.
It wasn't. No, that was, it was a phone thing.
It was a phone call. I was, I'm, I'm misinformed, but I still think, what are we going to do? Have, have the, the constable come and tell the mayor to stop?
You know, technically, that thing that we read at the beginning. All right, next I have Counselor Bullock. Okay, you can be after Counselor Bullock.
I also have questions about enforceability, but I, just to clarify, the intent of this is not that any of those people only have ten minutes to speak. It's that the initial remarks that they make to the council need to be concise and cohesive, and so you, they, the mayor can prepare her remarks, or the superintendent can prepare her remarks, and make sure that the topics are all there and spoken in ten minutes. And then there's as much time as needed to have communications with them ongoing. Like the questions that we asked the mayor today, that was our fault that it lasted so long, right? It wasn't, I mean, you know, it wasn't necessarily that the mayor just went on and on in a monologue tonight. We asked her many questions, and that is allowed under this. The intent is that, like, the opening remarks that both of those bodies have will be cut down to ten minutes and be more concise, and then the questions can go on for as long as needed. And I think we would probably have to enforce something like we do for public comment where there's an alarm, and hopefully it's abided by, that they wrap up when the alarm goes off.
Okay, I have Counselor Lepansky and then Counselor Gullub.
So this was my, adapted from my proposal originally, and I'd like to address the question of enforceability by reading something from our agenda. All persons shall at the request of the chair be silent. I think that answers the question of enforceability. It's up to the chair.
Okay, I have Counselor Gullub and then Counselor Mayo.
I just want to share from A and O that initially, when, when I saw this, there wasn't the additional piece on the questions from the council. And so it read as if it was only ten-minute conversation, which didn't seem to meet the needs of the conversation like we had today. So we amended this, we put significant thought into this, and we amended it to add the sub five A and six A, which are not time limited. And I believe that the mayor or any mayor is quite capable of being concise. It's just when there is a requirement to do so, they're more likely to do so. And I also believe that the council president has the capacity to say, it's time to stop. So I'll be voting yes.
Counselor Mayo, and then, is there anyone else?
I have just a quick question. It says that, or you stated that if they're out of order, that they can be asked to leave by a constable or other officer. Can you identify who that other officer may be?
Oh, tonight it would be Deputy Chief Gordon, but I trust that the mayor is going to be on our best behavior for us.
Chief Strahan's here too.
All right, folks.
All right, thank you.
Starting to feel tired and silly. Are we ready to vote? I'm sorry.
No, my, my simple compliment, comment was, I don't recall that a superintendent or the mayor in their opening statements goes over ten minutes ever. I mean, when we go over is, like, tonight with our questions, the ten minutes is, is there. I have never seen through two mayors that they sat down and spoke for, you know, twenty-two minutes or something, because it's supposed to be bullet points, bringing us updates, and that's what they do. And this was a guideline suggested, and that's what we adapted. And then five A and six A came out of questions, and they can't control questions, and asking the mayor's staff to join her, that's all in the five A and six A. So I'm going to support this, because I don't think it's, it's much of a change. It just gives what we presently do structure.
Okay, I have Counselor Bullock and then Counselor Lepansky.
I think most of the time it is not the ca, it is not a problem. I agree, Counselor Gwynn, but there has been, I, I've been, I've been surprised at a few early meetings on that it has gone on for a significant amount of time. And so I do think that, you know, if we're trying to not have meetings till midnight, it's not always the mayor that's keeping us here till midnight, clearly. But there, there definitely has been meetings where it's been significant, and, and even from invited guests, I think. So I, I hope that this will help us just have a, have a guideline for the agenda for what we're, what we're looking for in terms of time limits.
Thank you. Counselor Lepansky?
Counselor Bullock said what I was going to say. Whenever we do get around to voting, I want a roll call on this.
Okay. Are folks ready to vote? All right, we have a request for a roll call.
Counselor Gullub?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Lepansky?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toranzo?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
No, that's fine.
The motion passes by majority, eight yes.
Great. Okay, so the next one is the resolution. So if someone wants to take that from the table, they would have to read the motion on one oh nine.
I'll take it. That's four out of five, for those of you counting what I'm reading. That the City Council take from the table, huh, that's a weird way to, that the City Council take from the table, move that it be resolved. The City Council finds full and appropriate reason to declare that Police Chief Robert Haig has lost the confidence of the citizens of Greenfield and finds further reason to declare that Mayor Roxanne Weedgartner, due to her public support of Chief Haig, has similarly lost the confidence of the citizens of Greenfield. City Council therefore calls on the mayor to rectify this crisis of confidence either by firing Chief Haig immediately or by resigning from office, which was tabled at the September twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Meeting, majority vote required.
Second, Mayo.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, it's non-debatable. A yes vote means that we're taking this from the table, a no vote means we're leaving it on the table. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so it looks like this is not coming off the table. Okay, good, good night, folks. All right. Next, Presentation of Petitions and Similar Papers. I'm not going to ask for a report of committees tonight, sorry, guys. You can tell me next time. Do you have any unfinished business? Old business? New business?
Oh.
We have.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes?
Not new business, I just wanted to know if the city clerk wants to say anything about the election for people, because I know we are doing like mail-in and walk-in and, not that the public's awake, but maybe somebody's up.
You might get quoted in the paper.
There will be early voting starting this Saturday through, I'm sorry, not the following Tuesday, but the following, sorry, not the following Friday, but the following Friday. I have no dates in my head. Hours are listed on the website. Call the office if you want more information.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Thanks.
Oops. So can I get, was there any other new business before I go to the first reading? I'm sorry, Counselor Mayo, did you? I want to vote Saturday.
This is a question for Clerk Scott. Clerk Scott, do you have any idea when the, the mail-in ballots are, are going out?
The bulk of the mail-in ballots were mailed this week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. The bulk of them, not every single one of them. So there are still some to be mailed out. There was a little bit of a kerfuffle with the ballots originally received from the state. They needed to send us a second round of ballots, so we were delayed by about a week, but the majority of the ballots went out in the mail by today. There will be additional mailings.
Okay, so you don't anticipate any problems with, with them reaching their, the day of the election?
All I can tell you is we got them out in the mail. I don't speak for the U.S. Postal Service.
I received mine, so someone got it.
Good.
All right, thank you very much.
So Counselor Forgé first, then Counselor Lepansky.
Mike? Thank you. I just wanted to mention under new business that the Capital Improvement Committee will start meeting, our first meeting is October twenty-first, which is Friday, at nine thirty a.m. It is a Zoom meeting, and it will be recorded. This committee is composed of three people, would be Amy Peretti, representing the schools, Jean Wall, representing the Construction Committee, Planning and Construction Committee, and myself, representing Ways and Means. We will be starting our work on our twenty twenty-four capital items at this point. So please tune in, please, all the members of Ways and Means heard about this last evening, but it's really important if you want to educate yourself as to what is going on in regards to what will be coming forward as requests for capital. Please tune us, tune us in, tune us in, tune us in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oh, yes, Counselor Lepansky had his hand up.
Well, someone said that the public is asleep, and I just want to stick up for the public. I see members of the public in the audience, three of them, and I see at least five still on Zoom, and I think we should give them the credit they deserve. They are not asleep. They are watching us to make sure we do a good job.
But I asked the question because I said the public first. All right. If we could move on to first readings, there is no bickering at City Council meetings. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll do it first. City Council First Reading, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Appropriate two million five hundred thousand dollars from free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund eight four oh two. Appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to compensated absences funds eight four five zero. Appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to Contract Stabilization Fund eight four oh three. Appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to General Stabilization Fund eight four zero zero. Transfer six hundred thousand dollars from free cash to reduce the fiscal year twenty twenty-three tax rate. Transfer one hundred and seven, three hundred, one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred dollars from free cash to fiscal year twenty-three general fund vehicle fuel accounts. Appropriate eight thousand five hundred dollars from sewer retained earnings for fiscal year twenty-three sewer vehicle fuel accounts. Transfer ten thousand dollars from water, sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Did I, it was appropriate in the last one, and it's appropriate now, too. Appropriate ten thousand dollars from water retained earnings to fiscal year twenty-three water vehicle fuel accounts, and appropriate fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars from fiscal year reserve fund to fiscal year twenty, fiscal twenty-two reserve fund to fiscal year twenty-three weights and measures contracted services.
Okay, there was one, appropriate six hundred thousand from free cash to reduce the FY twenty twenty-three tax rate. That one was read as a transfer, so I just wanted to.
I did, I thought I did read it, I'm sorry.
All right, that's fine. And, yep, so now there's a notice of zoning amendments. Counselor Elmer?
Zoning amendment to rezone French King Highway from Gen, oops. Zoning amendment to rezone French King Highway from General Commercial G C to Plant Industry P I.
Thank you. Any motions for reconsideration? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Thank you. All right.
Sell moved records for the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, folks.